To order. We're going to have a regular meeting at 6:30. This will allow us to conduct a workshop during the special meeting. May I, we please have the roll call.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Chu?
Here.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Mayor Comer?
Here. Would you please rise if you're able and join us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our special meeting this evening, we have one business item. It's a workshop to discuss parking issues and the potential for preferential parking programs. We're going to have a staff report and we'll take public comment immediately after the staff report and city council member questions. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. During the spring months and into the summer earlier this year, the city explored the idea of implementing a preferential parking program. And the council did adopt an ordinance that allows you to consider and adopt by resolution parameters for specific areas of the city to have permit parking essentially. At this time, we haven't implemented that program. We haven't done it for any of the neighborhoods. And that's in part because at the conclusion of your discussion, you felt there needed to be more time for everybody to consider the ramifications of the program, to discuss that together, to hear more from the community. And there was an expressed interest in particular to hear what's happening at Redwood High School, which was the original impetus for this discussion to take place. So I'm pleased to let you know that the principal of Redwood High School, David Sonheim, is here tonight and can probably speak to you briefly about the changes they've made in their parking program and what those effects are in the early weeks since they've gone into place. I want to thank Principal Sonheim for meeting with me and Chief Norton to talk about parking challenges and actually seek our opinion on a few of the things they were working on. Appreciate that collaboration. I think we're seeing some positive things and we, of course, know there's still some effects caused by parking challenges at Redwood. I don't want to take up a lot of time with the presentation. The workshop format has generally been used so that the council can have more of an open dialogue with the folks present who want to participate. So it's really your discretion, Mr. Mayor, how you want to structure this. There isn't a formal decision at a workshop. We typically take direction from the council at the end as you sort of summarize your thoughts on what you've heard and what you want to see in a future action item. I did, however, wanted to take you briefly through some slides that highlight the questions that are in your staff report. And I would appreciate, and I think the staff that are all working on this for you, if at the end of this workshop, we get some direction on your thoughts about the questions that are in the, in the report. But for the benefit of those who haven't had a chance to see it, I thought we could briefly go through what those questions are. Can you advance it? Oh, how do I get it on? There's an on switch. It's the switch that says on. Okay.
For those members of the public that would like to see the slide presentation, you may want to consider moving across the aisle. I apologize for the constraint. Please continue.
Okay. So there are five questions outlined in the staff report that we'd like you to, we'd encourage folks who are speaking to you tonight to address the ones that are of concern to them. And then we would be seeking some general direction from the council at the end of the workshop. The first question is, what should qualify, and actually, I think I'll just, for time's sake, advance it. What should qualify a neighborhood or area to have a preferential parking system? We looked at what a lot of different programs around the state have. And we found 75% is a common number that a petition that represents 75% of those affected by the proposed area, whether that comes in the form of individual residents signing off, or if it comes in the form of a homeowners association that represents that area, that seemed to be a common threshold. There were other numbers. It's kind of arbitrary. So you can kind of think about what you think is appropriate for Larkspur. Should parking restrictions be no parking without a permit, or should parking be allowed for a period of time for vehicles without a permit? Staff kind of thinks this should probably end up being, depending on the situation and the behavior that we're trying to curb. For example, we've discussed in the Marina neighborhood that no parking without a permit during school hours would probably be the best way for us to work on addressing the challenge they're facing. Mill Valley, for example, I mentioned in one of your meetings, has a four-hour restricted parking zone near Miller Avenue to deal with some of the effects of employees trying to park in the neighborhoods. Now, I have talked with Chief Norton. He's looked into this a little more. And the reality is, those are not as effective as I think some of the cities like Mill Valley would like because employees take a break and they move their car and it doesn't really alleviate the bigger problem. So something to keep in mind. How many parking permits should be issued to any one property? This is all over the map when we look at different cities, but we did find that three or four is a common number. But staff had suggested four, two permanent and two visitor, and those are discussed as what those mean in the staff report. But this is really something that should be discussed this evening and eventually some direction from council. And then, should the passes be issued annually, or should they be tied to the vehicle for the lifetime of its registration at a particular address? And tied to that is what fee should be charged for a permit. Most programs we looked at, the passes are annual. And then, there are some that just issue it tied to the vehicle, but most issue it annually. And then, the amount being charged is, again, all over the map. I mentioned to you the last time we talked about this topic. It's my impression that a city figures out, or a government figures out an amount, and then that's the amount forever. It doesn't look to me like cities revisit these, this particular fee too often. So that's something to bear in mind. We saw, I've seen $20, $30, $40. The big cities, it gets much more expensive. They have much more sophisticated programs than we're talking about here. So there are the questions. I'm going to leave that up on the board so you can keep looking at them. You have them in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions from the written material you've received. But again, this is an evening for you to hear from the folks in attendance and give us some general direction. And as I mentioned, Principal Sonheim's here if you want to hear a little bit about Redwood High School. Turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there questions of council members? From council members? Councilmember Way?
So Dan, we, first question is, how do we define neighborhood in this? Is it, will be it self-defined, or are we going to outline specific neighborhoods?
So the larger cities tend to outline it. But a lot of the smaller cities we looked at tend to let that sort of be the neighborhood coming forward. One of the challenges, I think, here is we didn't put scale in at all. So you may want to talk about, are you willing to let one block of a neighborhood propose this, or do you want to see a certain number of houses before you would consider there to be sufficient critical mass to have a program? That's really a discussion point.
So would it be for neighborhood, would it be reasonable to have, since we have, like, the neighborhood response groups, the NRGs, which have already established 34 different neighborhoods? Would it be appropriate to use that outline of what those neighborhoods have decided to define themselves as, or should we think of other ways?
I think that could be kind of challenging for some of the NRG boundaries because some of those are fairly large and not every part of that neighborhood is necessarily being impacted. You received at least one correspondence from a resident concerned with the implications of the success of the businesses on Magnolia and the overflow parking into their neighborhood. That impact is pretty contained to the blocks near Magnolia and doesn't really go out into what I would say is the entire NRG-defined boundary.
So if the $50 per pass, so let's say there's two cars and two guest passes, that's $200?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Just my basic beginner questions.
Questions for the city manager from other council members. All right? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? Or respond to the, to the questions that are on the, on the board? Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and City Manager Schwartz. Thank you. Oh, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name's Elliot Zalta, and I'm the president of the Greenbree Improvement Club. Several other board members are supposed to show up. Anyway, the Greenbree Improvement Club is the name of our community association of homeowners and residents of the Greenbree Boardwalk, which consists of 49 homes and approximately 100 residents. If you're not familiar with our paradise, we are aligned on a walkway that extends about a half a mile along the Corder Madara Creek and directly across from the Larkspur Ferry. I've printed satellite images of the boardwalk and our parking areas for your viewing. I didn't know about your projection thing here. And you have them in your packets. Our neighborhood is unique in many ways. One is that we do not have traditional parking spaces or garages in front of our homes. We do have a long-term lease with the Marin County for a parking lot that we refer to as the front lot. That's in green on your maps, and it holds 38 vehicles. That's the closest lot. We designate a few spaces for elderly and disabled. We also lease from Caltrans what we refer to as the back lot. It's up against the highway overpass and holds 44 vehicles. That one is red. There's public street parking on Redwood Highway with 28 spaces. Those are in yellow. So due to a construction project that will be widening the Corder Madara Creek overpass for improved bicycle and pedestrian use, which we totally agree with, by the way, we've been notified by Caltrans that we'll be losing the use of the back lot for 12 to 18 months. The estimated project will begin as May 2019 and will be given only 30 days' notice to vacate. We are promised to get the lot back after the project ends, however, with several less spaces. For the boardwalk, when we lose the back lot, we will have 44 vehicles displaced for one and a half years or more. We believe the project will not only affect the boardwalk residents, but impact parking for the entire area. It's already stressed by limited parking. There's two trailer parks, multiple businesses that make heavy use of the parking. Our board members have met several times to address this issue. We've scoured the area for potential parking lots, and it appears none exist. We realize that we need your help. We ask you, our representatives of the city of Larkspur, and any appropriate planning departments that you have for your assistance. Just a little bit more here. We're willing and able to work with you on this and come up with a plan that helps our community. Some of our ideas include limited preferential or restricted street parking for our residents only during the time we lose the back lot. And by the way, we were working on this long before this workshop was called. It's kind of perfect that it's all happening tonight. Or might a resolution fall under the recently created Larkspur Ordinance 1028, which provides preferential parking permits for Marina residents near Redwood High School? I've also provided a copy of an application for hardship parking permit issued by Central Marin Police Authority, San Somo Station. It appears that our sister city has some sort of provisions for this kind of situation. And in the future, we will urge that Caltrans and other agencies carefully coordinate their future plans so that it's not to occur simultaneously during this time period because that would just be really devastating. And for instance, there are ongoing PG&E projects, the current one blocking about 20 street parking spaces in our area for weeks at a time. Thank you for your consideration, and we hope to meet with you soon.
Thank you very much for your comments and your thoughtful preparation.
Oh, you're welcome. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Zalta? It's very helpful. Thank you very much. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions regarding this agenda item? Yes, sir?
Hi there. Mark Roth, 70 Camilla Circle. Our neighborhood, I believe the streets are private with public easement for, for public right-of-way. How does, how is that affected relative to the preferential parking program that's under consideration? Would the parking rules on a private street be different from a public street? I'm not sure exactly. I've exchanged a couple of emails with Hamid Kalali, but I haven't been able to exactly wrap my mind around exactly how this works relative to a public street.
Will you get an answer on that one?
Would staff like to respond?
We'll need to get back to you. I don't have an answer to that.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's a good question.
Oh, it's 70 Camilla Circle?
Creekside.
No, it's Rose Lane.
We actually exchanged emails.
Oh, Rose Lane.
So that's something we can get information on later when we?
We'll address it in a future report.
Okay. I think it would also be helpful to, for me, to find out how many other private streets we have. I mean, neighborhood private streets, if that, if we do have that many. Okay?
Are there other, Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, doesn't the public use still exist even though they're privately maintained? I would think that's, that's the key question.
I just would need a little opportunity to research the specifics of the arrangement we have with them.
Thank you.
Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments? Yes, sir?
So my name is James Lynch, 118 Monavista. And I just want to piggyback on my neighbor's email to the council that we talked about the Baltimore Park area as far as an NRG. But basically, the restaurants and shops here really impact from, on Monavista, from King, at least to Baltimore, and then many times up to Alexander. William gets impacted. Holcomb gets impacted. And when the holidays come, if you're not home and you're parking place by 2:00 in the afternoon, you're not going to get a parking place. So I'm not sure what the answer is. I just wanted to bring that to, you know, to your attention, that maybe we can work on it, you know, as a, as a neighborhood and as a council together.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir?
Hi, Chuck Maltz on Riviera Circle. I came in late, so I want to apologize. You may have already covered it. But are you covering all neighborhoods? So all neighborhoods would be a designated parking area for the residents that live there? Or?
No, we're talking about, we have, we haven't created a program for any neighborhood yet.
Okay.
We want to hear from you about your neighborhood concerns.
Right. Well, I'm just kind of confused because I'm surprised and no one from the Marina is here.
I'm here. Don't worry.
No, I was.
Oh, okay. What's okay? I'm a ghost and a stranger. So at any rate. Right. Oh, okay. I was here 20 years ago with the Marina problem. And I remember working closely with Andre Horn. And we did the permit and the no parking so that it wouldn't become a burden on the city council. And it looks like 20 years later or so, it has now evolved into that. But just to let you know how it's worked so far with the no parking sign or limited sign for 20 minutes has actually been, been really good. Okay? Some of the kids are great. I'll leave notes on their, on their cars telling them, you know, you get a ticket, don't park here tomorrow. If they do come the next day, then I call. Because whenever there's a car that's parked, and usually it's from the school, I wait a day or two after warning them. And then I call, give the license number, and you guys respond really well like you did on Tuesday. So it's worked very well, at least in the outer part. Unfortunately, there, from what I understand, now this is just through rumor, some of the kids at Redwood High School were told by some folks within the Marina, ah, come on, go ahead and park. Well, you know what that does? That lets everybody come whipping in there and they come in and park. But we haven't really had a bad problem, I would say, up until maybe about the last three years. And I had been there when there was student body of 2,900, 3,000 kids going to school there in the late 70s and in the early 80s. And we hadn't ever really had the huge influx that's going on now. And just to let you know, it was interesting, the car that was being ticketed, I went out and talked to the cadet, and I don't remember his name, but whoever was working on Tuesday in the traffic and parking was a great, great person. And he was very nice to work with. But as I was talking with him, and since I'm at the entrance, I can look over and I saw three empty parking spots. So then I got to thinking about what you had discussed, nobody's going to be leaving the parking lot during lunchtime and that kind of stuff. I think some of the kids are saying, well, then I'm not just going to park in, in the school, I'm going to park outside, and then I can run over and take off in my car whenever I want to. But the $200 is a bit steep. So I just hope that you look at something that may be a little more reasonable. And kids have a way of taking down patterns. So when they find out and they figure out what your pattern is when you come and you not mark the tire, they're going to figure that out. And they're going to go in between, leave class early, leave the school early. So that's something that you need to think about. Now, I'm having some wood rot taken care of in the front of my house right now. And my workers, I give them, and put a copy of my permit in there so that they don't get ticketed. But I believe the issue, at least for the Marina, because there's only two entrances, is a good one. And it could work if you wanted to put the no parking signs all the way around and continue it the way it is. And if there's a resident who's upset that they're constantly parking, then they give you a call and say, come on down and ticket. And within a short period of time, usually, they'll come down and do it. And that has worked well because the kids don't return. The problem that I have is when the kids sit there and I'm always picking up their lunch, or the papers they didn't like from school, or something like that. That's at the eastern entrance. The western entrance has the same problem. But I do know that there are a few, not all, that are very disrespectful. My daughter, with my granddaughter, were out on the sidewalk about, just before school let out this year in the summertime, and this GT wonderful hot rod, the driver decided to floor the car, burnout, almost lost control of the rear end of the car, and almost went and hit my daughter and my, my granddaughter. Now, you call the school, and all we get is a push-button answering service. And that's no good. And what good is it going to do? So those are the things that are objectable. I coached in Marin County for over 20 years. Love kids. Redwood is not a bother. The kids are not a bother overall. It's just a few. But unfortunately, those few end up creating a big problem. And I know that it goes off into Heather Gardens. I lived in Heather Gardens for about a year before I moved over to the Marina. And there's a problem there. And I don't envy your task because it's huge, that it envelops everything and everybody. But something needs to be done. And I understand that these are public streets. And I understand that everybody pays taxes for these streets. But this is a residential area. It wasn't made to be a parking lot for Redwood High School. And there's a big difference. And I respect people needing to be able to park and do what they need to do, but to use it as an overflow should not be accepted. And Redwood High School should understand that. And from what I understand, back in the early 60s, there were plans for more parking. The football field was going to be moved over where the new baseball field is now, and they were going to make more parking. But time goes by. Things change. And I believe something reasonable can come forward. I've been taking too much time. And I'll leave it at that. And by the way, if you have any problems, please call me. Or if you need any input about the meeting that was 20 years ago, or what has transpired over these years, I know that, kind of have to admit it now, but I guess I'm a retired elder now, and I do have lots of information on a whole lot of other things, too, that might be able to help you people out. So you have my number, and I'll give it again, and hopefully I'll be hearing from you all.
Thank you for your comments.
And it's good to see you all.
Nice to see you.
You, too.
Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? It's a workshop. We'd appreciate hearing from the neighborhoods, please. Yes, ma'am? And we rightly acknowledge we have many more vehicles than we used to in our neighborhoods.
I was, Meg Rafter from Riviera Circle. And I wasn't sure how the format was going to be, so I really wasn't prepared to speak. But what I was wondering was really from Mr. Sonheim, if the parking measures have taken effect or not. I thought you were going to speak, but you haven't raised your hand to speak, so that was my question. Can I get an answer?
Yeah, our parking measures have not yet been.
Okay. That's what I thought. Because it sounded like when you started the meeting that they had gone into effect. And clearly, from today's exodus at lunch, with 50 cars going 50 miles an hour, it hasn't started. Or they're not afraid of the new plan. So it hasn't started.
It has not yet.
Okay. That's all I wanted to find out. I've spoken many times about Riviera Circle, so I don't need to do any more of that. You are fabulous. Everything you said is true. Some are rude, some are not. They all throw trash. They all throw papers. They're all leeching into the, they know the 20-minute signs only exist for a certain bit, so they come further up. And it's, it's not fun for those of us that live there. And I have to agree that the $50 fee is not going to go over well in our neighborhood. And I know it is what it is. But having it have been $5 for 20 years?
Forever.
And like you said, you don't go back and revisit it? Going back and revisiting it is going to throw the piece off a little bit. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Other members of the public that would like to speak on this item tonight? Or ask questions? Yes, sir? I suspect every neighborhood's suffering similar impacts.
Yeah, Ricardo Gale, we live right behind here, so right on Monavista. So, you know, with Perrys and everything, it's gotten crazy. My question, I have a question, actually, and it is just, what potential additional parking opportunities have been explored? Like, for example, I see the lot next to the, the phone switch, you know, that right next to Pico where there's a fence and it seems like you could drive down there and park. And then there's all the parking at St. Pat's, for example. So I'm just kind of wondering, is there parking that could be freed up? Because, you know, permitting is one thing, but it just pushes all those cars into someone else's neighborhood? What we really need is more parking, unless we're going to somehow keep people from driving and realistically?
We can have staff comment on this. There, there used to be a shared parking arrangement with St. Patrick's, with some of the restaurants, who did not have parking lots on their property. But those relationships have eroded and not, they're not in effect anymore. Not to say that the demand has gone away. It's been made worse. Would staff like to comment? Otherwise, we'll have to get back with more information.
Yeah, so let's start with the mayor's comments because I want to make sure they're not taken incorrectly. I'm not sure, I want anybody pointing the finger at St. Pat's.
No, of course not.
Just, I don't mean you did, but just to be clear, on both sides of the logistics, valets, parking cars at St. Pat's, which was the intention, has never functioned well. And both parties have sort of not worked hard to maintain that relationship. The city's made multiple overtures to AT&T about its property and its underutilization. And they have a variety of genuine security concerns about allowing any sort of parking arrangement there. So I probably make that inquiry every year on an annual basis, and someday I hope I find. And someday, I hope I find somebody who works for AT&T who can come visit Larkspur and see how valuable it would be to the community, um, but haven't been able to achieve that one either. But we do look at those, those are probably the two, the, the speakers correctly identified sort of the two things that the city looks at a lot.
Morrison has a question.
Dan, why didn't it go well with St. Pat's? What's the history there?
I think it's actually logistically very challenging for the valets to bring the cars in and out and do it in a timely fashion that's safe for St. Pat's, too. I mean, if you think about the facility, it sounded really good. But when you think about it, you've got children there a lot, uh, you've got a lot of activity going on. It's not the, the lighting, I think, can be challenging. And then just, if you think about the inertia of getting the valets to do it when unfortunately, they keep choosing to park in our neighborhood. So I know that's one of the frustrations for some of the neighborhoods, that the valets are using them. The challenge there is if we start ticketing those cars, we're not ticketing. The valets were punishing the customers. So, uh, we typically work with the valets and things get better for a while. And then the staff changes and the behaviors come back, and we had to re-educate the valets again. Um, I think the person who wrote in for Montevista was speaking more about employees parking in the neighborhood than they were about, um, about the valets using it. And so that's a different conversation that, um, we need to have with those businesses.
And it's just not Perry's, it's Pico's, too, right? It's.
Uh, well, the Pico's valets, I think Pico's ownership would agree, spend sort of the one that the neighborhood's been most frustrated with over the years. Um, and they've worked very closely with us, I want to acknowledge their management. Anytime we call them, they, they invite us over to educate. Like I said, the problem is that valets are not a job where the same valet is there for twenty years and we get to keep building that relationship. They're there twenty minutes and then we're educating the next person who's working that job. So that's part of our challenge.
Councilmember Chu.
Yeah, regarding the broader discussion about downtown parking, uh, that's actually on the agenda tonight as part of the 2050 Plan Review. For those of you who don't want to stay for that, uh, you can just go on our website online for today's agenda, and there's a write-up about parking that starts on page twenty-three.
Thank you for that information. Are there other members of the public that would like to comment or ask questions on this item? Yes, sir.
Can I speak from here?
Please come to the microphone. We'd like to get all the comments on the record, and we're live streaming, so we want to make sure you get due notice.
Hold on, yeah. So my name's Andrew Slater, I'm head of school of Marin Primary and Middle School, and I also live on Williams, um, right off the bike path. So I definitely understand the issues surrounding parking, and I guess I'm going to need help if we're going to go to this permit model, because our, the par- the parking that we have on-site, we have to leave open because preschool families cannot, uh, they have to go into the building and out of the building to check their kids in and out of our school, that's, that's the law, which means I have to leave that parking open. And when I have teachers who can't afford to live in this area but have to travels far away, as Petaluma or, you know, or Napa or the city or Oakland, I, I can't figure out a carpooling model that would work. I can't figure out, like, where could we, where could I shuttle them? I, I, I'm sort of at a loss, truthfully. And I've just been alerted to this relatively recently and have been spending some time. And I certainly want us to be good neighbors. I, I'm not want, and I'm hoping that whenever issues do arise, we can hear them and we will try to, and we'll address them. But I guess my other question is, does there have to be one-size-fits-all solution to Larkspur? Is it possible to have? Because when I'm listening to these different problems, they're different, right? You know, the, the Perry's has one kind of time crunch around there. The, you know, we have another one, it sounds like Redwood has another one. And, and I don't, bigger minds than mine would have to figure out what those solutions would be. But I'm wondering if we could think about flexible models, that different neighborhoods, different areas could adre- could adopt different things. Or if employees, if there's a way for employees somehow to be permitted. Um, and I, I understand the challenge with that, but I, but I really am not sure how we would be able to stay, um, and, you know, and we do have a lease with the, you know, with the s- uh, school, um, system here in Corder Medera. So I, I don't know what we would do, if that makes sense.
Uh, Councilmember Way has a question.
So of staff, that would be something I'd like a little bit more information about, just whether there are other communities within Marin or other models in which employees of, of institutions that are within a neighborhood have access to permits.
The only one I'm familiar with is in Mill Valley, the, um, city has empowered the Chamber, Downtown Merchant Association, sorry, to issue employee parking permits to take up street parking that's designated as downtown parking, not residential parking. Um, that's the only one I'm familiar with in Marin. I had shared with the mayor today that I, I was looking at Santa Monica, which has the most, you know, insane, robust parking program. But they actually do have this problem where they've had to have commercial entities with permits because they have older facilities that can't provide parking. And so they've had to make that arrangement and allow a certain number of employees to park in residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think it's a, a good point about not the one-size-fits-all. I, I, I take that as an interesting thing, because we really have a variety of different neighborhoods and parking impacts. Um, it's not consistent throughout. And while we have most of the speakers tonight talking about the downtown corridor here, Larksp- fifty percent of Larkspur is on the opposite side of the creek, which has a very different parking structure. So I appreciate those comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'd really like to hear of your experience or, uh, have, anyone experiencing high school impacts or high school students? What are your thoughts on, on convenience? How many cars need to be? I see you whispering back there. Come on, come on, young and ladies, please. Come on, tell us what you think.
Hello, I'm Melissa, I'm the ASB Vice President, um, at Redwood. So for the three students of us that are here tonight, we are part of leadership, so we actually get to school at seven in the morning. So for us, parking has never really been an issue. But as we, like, we understand a lot of the neighborhood complaints just because students who go out to lunch, they like, if they can't find parking quickly enough, then they go to the neighborhood and park. But we also kind of were upset by some of the, like, generalizations made, because not all students disrupt homes and that kind of stuff. Yeah, we didn't have them. Okay.
Uh, could I ask you a couple of questions? Do you think that s- uh, students would be interested in, uh, taking part and reducing the impacts? I mean, there are bigger issues here than just convenience. I mean, there, if you really want to talk about the problem, we've got, um, traffic impacts, climate change, I mean, there, we could go as deep as you'd like. Do you think students are interested in these things? Or do you think they're more concerned with mobility during the day?
I mean, I think a lot of students are accustomed to expecting when they get to be an upperclassman that they have this privilege to driving. So that's where the issue comes, because, like, we understand the whole environmental idea and like having carpooling be implemented more so, but students kind of just have this expectation. And I think that's the hardest thing to break. But I think, at least what we've been talking about with administration is this idea that as you get older, you have a better chance of getting parking. So for seniors to have priority, in that way, we could almost eliminate all other grades from even having the access. And so, like, juniors wouldn't get the privilege, but then that means they'd be carpooling or having other environmentally friendly ways to get to school.
What about, what about the conversation just about cars versus alternatives? Do you think there's of interest there? Or have we made the car so important to the high school class that that's not, that's not on the table, do you think?
Well, for students who live, like, I'm, I live in Tiburon, so for me, I can't take a bus in the morning, so the only way for me to get to school is to drive, like, I can't bike to school. Like, so there's some places where people live that it's just cars are like the only option that makes sense. But like, what do you mean by other forms of getting to school?
Uh, sharing buses, I, if it's not possible.
Yeah, well, I mean, things we've talked about is like, yes, for Tiburon, we have, I think, two buses that come, they come in the morning, but for kids who have sports after school, how are they going to get home? For kids who have a zero-period chem class, how are they going to get to school? Like, there's so many variables among students, especially since our population is rising, there's a lot more, like, class options and things like that, that it's just challenging for us to have, like, one way for students to get to school.
So we have structural challenges here. Thank you very much for your comments.
I have one question.
Yeah.
What year are you?
A senior.
A senior. So, um, how could the school is, help other, um, junior and seniors figure out who your neighbors are and who you can carpool with? Because I'm sure you have others that live around you that maybe want to get to school at seven. How, how do you, do you feel that that's a good structure right now? Do you know who's around you that wants to carpool?
I mean, for me mostly, or my friends, I guess, it's more word of mouth and just knowing, like, who went to middle school with you, so you're kind of familiar with that, the people who live nearby you. But I think if there was some sort of way to implement kind of like a, not like a.
A roster, it says, do you know, and you're within a mile or two from you, so-and-so lives there.
And I think that's like a good basis, but again, off of that, like, students are all going to have such different schedules that it's just really hard to have something consistent.
But it would open up a dialogue, wouldn't it?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea.
And what do you think about Lyft and, um, carpooling with Lyft or?
Like Uber?
With Uber, yeah. They've got a program now.
Yeah, at least for me, like, Uber, like, it adds up over time, it's not like a cheap.
But carpooling, Uber and Lyft, do, do the kids or, do the students even talk about that?
Like, you're so, like, a shared Uber ride, you're saying? I mean, I'm trying to think, like, a bus to Redwood, I think, is like a dollar or two dollars. And an Uber is definitely like, even if you were splitting it, it's probably like five to seven dollars.
That's a good point.
So if you think about that there and back, and waiting for Ubers and all, it's just.
Okay, thank you, appreciate you coming up.
Yeah.
Really appreciate your, uh, comments.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've got a question, too, so, follow up on that. If it's seven dollars and you had four other passengers, you're saying that an Uber ride from Tiburon is like twenty-eight, thirty dollars?
So, I mean, I don't know exactly, but I'm saying if there's like five to seven people in an Uber, you have to get like the plus size, which does actually cost more money.
I'm just thinking a normal-sized car.
Technically, you're not supposed to be under eighteen and riding independently with a ride-sharing service by law.
Oh, okay, I don't know that.
Yeah.
But here, here's something to think about, because I think of things in terms of worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
So if the worst thing that would happen is that they implement Mr. Sonheim's proposal, then, you know, the dialogue also at school needs to be, what kind of solution are we going to try and find now? So you need to be creative there, you know, the city will help out with it, but, you know, that, think of it in those terms.
Yeah, and like, last comment, I just think from a student perspective, even though this issue has been like, kind of expected to occur as the population size is growing, I think the recent, like, news of this has kind of like hit students suddenly. Like, we haven't been really aware of the parking issue until, like, these, um, parking ideas have been proposed. So like, from us, at least, I've lo- I've heard a lot of students' comments saying that it shouldn't happen right now, in the next few weeks, like, students kind of need time to figure out solutions. So like, I've heard not just seniors saying this, but just like waiting till like the start of next year or things like that, where it can be a little more organized, not just thrown at students to figure out.
Thank you very much. Very helpful. This really helps.
Um, hi, I'm Freddie Kehoe, I'm also a senior at Redwood, and, um, I'm the Student Body Secretary. Um, I'd just like to say, I think the changes to the system actually for student parking are more likely to help the problem than it probably looks like. Uh, because as a student, just like kind of seeing the culture throughout four years, generally what happens is, like, kids come to school, um, because we've had like eight hundred students for three hundred and fifty spots for a while. Um, so students will come to school in their car expecting a spot. And the fact that they don't get a spot after that is what causes them to then park in the neighborhoods and disrupt traffic. And then additionally, leaving at lunch, um, students in the neighborhoods often move into the parking lot during that time. And the students who leave the parking lot during lunch then move into the neighborhoods. Yeah, so that's, that's like a big, uh, cause of the traffic in the neighborhoods, from what I've seen and have taken part in, uh, in the past. So I actually think this change, um, it's, it's worth giving it some time, like, a few months to see the effects it has, because I think it will have a greater impact than is probably, uh, expected.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think that wasn't so hard. When is it going to go into effect?
I don't want to take long, but I do want to thank, um, Councilperson Morrison, City Manager Schwartz and Chief of Police Norton for helping us work on this. As we looked at different options, they were incredibly helpful. And thank you for organizing the meeting with, with Safe Rats of Schools and giving us feedback. And I also really want to thank, these students are really, you need to know, are a model of what student leadership is about, and I've told them that a couple of times. But, um, they have, they have really dove right into this with us and tried to look at ways that we can improve the plan we originally came up with and done a nice job of, of representing their constituency and sharing their own ideas and that, finding that balance. And so I thank you guys for that work. Our plan will hopefully be implemented in the next several weeks. Um, we have the, the changes, I can describe to you if people want to hear more detail. I think you have the description of it. But we hope to, in the next few weeks, we're working out some application details, and we got to get all our spaces numbered, um, using the paint striping folks. And once we have that, we'll be implementing. So it has not yet taken effect. And the biggest changes are, we will be, um, our, our main goals, real quickly, were to in- increase as best we can student safety and community safety to, to be effective and, and sensitive to our environment, to limit the number, ideally, reduce the number of cars that are driving to and from Redwood every day, and to reduce the impact on the community as much as we can. We want to be good neighbors as, as the local high school. We are trying to distribute the number of permits equal to the number of spaces, kind of like Freddie was talking about. And we've had recommendations from the community to see if that hopefully reduces the number of people who don't have a permit trying to park on campus and in the community. We are going to, for safety reasons, I want to be clear, less so parking reasons, but really for safety reasons, um, if you get a permit, we've decided that we're not going to let students leave at lunch anymore. We think it is a significant local, um, safety risk that I feel like we're just waiting for something to happen. And, and none of us feel comfortable continuing to have students on thirty-five to forty-minute lunches, drive out of campus hurriedly, even some of our most wonderful students, and, and put themselves and others at risk. So that's the reason for that one. And we're going to monitor as we go. Carpools will have the highest priority to getting permits, and we'll go by lottery, um, on a seniors' then juniors' basis after that. And our hope is that, that those who don't have permits will look for more alternative ways, walking, biking, public transportation, um, to get to school. And those who have the, the spaces will use them, ideally mostly for multi-use, not single use. We'll see how that goes. As you may know, if you dive into it further, the laws that exist around restricted driver's licenses actually hinder our, our efforts there. Fewer juniors can be carpool drivers. But our hope is we'll see more carpools than we've had in the past. And even that, we've seen an increase over the last few years when we look at, at students trying to do their part. And our hope is they will get creative, as, as the mayor asked, and that they will find other ways, whether it's carpooling, walking, biking, scootering, et cetera. It's worth mentioning, I recently, and this is, I just recently saw a company that was trying to aim itself at the market of transporting kids. Lyft and Uber are not legal for students who are under eighteen, but there's actually a, a, I think it's aimed even younger than high school kids, um, some sort of ride-sharing. But I don't know the details, but I wonder, again, whether that may prove effective as we move forward. If that helps, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for David? Larry?
Um, on, on the permits you're going to issue, since it's, uh, one person, one space, if, you know, you have the same kid then driving to school every day with his or her best friends, if they don't want to always be the one absorbing the cost of transportation, is it possible for them to like switch cars but use that space?
Yes, so if we have a carpool. Yes, so if we have a carpool space that's being shared, say, by our three wonderful students, all three of them will get a permit for that space, for their cars, that they can all drive, and they're all unrestricted drivers. So they can decide who's gonna drive, but only one car of their three can park in that space on any given day, but they'll all be permitted.
Yeah, okay.
If that makes sense. And they will not be able to use a different, single-use space that may exist, because they're, they're committing to carpooling.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to comment or ask questions on this item?
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure. It's a workshop.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, just listening to the, uh, the new parking, I'm curious, it seems like not letting kids leave for lunch, which, well, I understand it's a safety issue, it seems like it creates a disincentive for kids to actually want to park on campus, because I would never underestimate the burning desire of a kid to want to drive his car. Um, the other thing I wonder about is, with the limited number of permits, doesn't that reduce the number of permitted cars? So, other people would want to park in the neighborhood that don't have a permit? I mean, where are we really going with this? I'm just concerned that we're creating a set of conditions that actually increase the problems in the surrounding neighborhoods rather than alleviate the problems.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to that, actually?
Yes.
I strongly advocated with Principal Sonheim to create a program that didn't issue more permits than spaces, and I'll tell you why. As a parent, the current system doesn't require the parent to get involved, because a parent says, you have a permit, get to school in time to park. Under this arrangement, if you know your child didn't get a permit, you, as a parent, need to participate in a conversation about how your child's gonna get to school. And in fairness to parents, they've never had to have that conversation, because their kid has a permit, they can get to school. So, um, I was actually strongly opposite your opinion. I think it actually motivates families to have a conversation they're not having under the current system, which is, how do you get to school if you don't have a parking permit? Um, yes, there will still be people that park in the neighborhood, but I think, don't, discount that we have some responsibility for parents to get involved in that conversation. Um, and then I strongly applaud the don't leave at lunch, because remember, this is as much about public safety as it is anything else, and we can all attest our concerns about the speed at which cars are leaving the Redwood parking lot and returning. Um, and I know from past conversations with the school folks, anecdotally, that may be a game, a competition among some of the students, to see how far away they can go and get back without being late to class. I'm sure the three students that came never did that, but I'm sure there are some students that have done that game, so...
Yes, sir.
I guess we'll just see how it goes in a couple of weeks, and then we'll all know.
Other members of the public that would like to comment? Uh, this lady, and then we'll give you another shot.
I just have a question around, like, buses. Like, you know, when we were all little, we took school buses, and I've never heard that conversation come up. Is that just off the table? Any kind of public buses, or, um, you know, has, has Redwood ever thought of, you know, there is a new system, my son uses Zoom, because he have homeschools, so we have him come, and you can do group rides, and I know they also have buses, so I'm just curious if that conversation is...
Uh, there are, uh, bus programs. The city does not itself administer a bus program, but there are, uh, between the, the high school district, the, uh, county transportation authority, and the county itself, there are, Marin Transit, there are bus routes and bus programs devoted to school resources.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so school buses are never coming back. That's like a thing of the past? Like, real school buses that are for school, that come to the schools?
I, I think to answer the speaker's question, the state stopped paying for school buses a long time ago, so the only way they get paid for is if local communities elect to pay for them.
Okay. That answers my question.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that want to speak to this item tonight? All right.
Very quickly, I wanted to add to, uh, the, the problem of the Green Bay Boardwalk parking, is that this is almost going to completely eliminate us having guests come to visit. We can't even park there. And what kind of a home is that, where you can't have family and friends even come to visit for a year and a half? I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Good evening. My name's Greg Dockler. I'm the Student Body President at Redwood High School. Um, I just was, uh, trying to answer the question about buses. Uh, Redwood is serviced by Marin Transit, and we have two actual, uh, bus lines that are generally reserved for students, the 113 out of Paradise Cay in Corte Madera, and the 119 for Tiburon. But those are really the only two, uh, areas in the district, or for, that are districted for Redwood that have sufficient bus service. Um, so that's one of the problems that we have, uh, coming in from the parking issues, that there are other areas, uh, like Ross, that are insufficiently serviced by, uh, transit buses or buses that don't get to school, um, for the correct timing. Um, so, that's one of the major issues that we've seen with public transportation, is that we don't have a good way to get students that live relatively far away from campus, far enough that walking or biking becomes relatively infeasible, um, but that don't have a way to get to school through public transportation. Uh, and I also just wanted to stand for questions, if any of the council members have questions about student parking still, because it seemed like there was interest in that earlier.
Well, thank you for helping define the, the bus challenge specifically.
Yeah, and safe routes to school, that's our next discussion, is to try to get more buses involved in different routes. Totally agree with you. That needs to be dealt with.
Do you think that the, uh, student body at, at Redwood would be interested in a, in, in working together on an environmental goal, like reducing the number of vehicle miles traveled by the student population over a year, for example?
Um, I think that there are definitely subsets of the student body that are very environmentally focused. I, myself, took AP Environmental Science last year, and I know there's a lot of students that are environmentally conscious at Redwood. Um, as to whether they'd be willing up to give up their driving privileges to assist the environment, I'm less sure of that.
I wasn't speaking of giving up privileges, just banding together to see what you can accomplish.
Yes, and I, I think that there are definitely, uh, there's a lot of student organizations on campus. We have somewhere in the range of sixty clubs, and definitely over five of them are devoted to environmental action and, and plans for, uh, doing, uh, better for our environment. So I think, uh, bringing it up with those clubs on campus would definitely be something...
I'd like to see some incentive-based efforts, as opposed to some punitive approaches to achieving the same result. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
In general, if you look at all your friends, how far would you say they're willing to walk if the bus didn't stop right at Redwood?
Um, I know, uh, a lot of people walk at least as far as from, like, the Corte Madera DMV. That's a common drop-off point for parents driving into campus, because the traffic gets much worse from there, and that's about a ten-minute walk. So I think that's pretty standard for students getting dropped off, um, in the morning. So I think somewhere in the range of ten to fifteen minutes would be a reasonable time, especially since the walking radius that the parking plan instituted by, uh, Redwood's administration limits, um, twenty-minute radius. So any, any students living within a twenty-minute radius of Redwood aren't allowed to get parking permits. So I think having some kind of similar range of walking from a bus would be probably reasonable.
Okay. I guess that's a question from Marin Transit, because there are at least two buses in the morning that go up Magnolia from the Rose Valley.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, council members.
All right. Who else would like to speak on this item? If not, I'm gonna, we're gonna bring it back to the, please. We'll, we'll bring it back to the council to close out the item after the speaker.
Sorry. I just want to say to the students, I'm sorry if we sound heartless, but I need you to know, this shouldn't be a surprise to you, because Mr. Sonheim and I have been emailing for years about this, and he promises me every time, I'm gonna put it out there to the kids, I'm gonna put it out there to the kids, I'm gonna put it out there to kids. So if you don't know about it, ask him, because I have emails where he tells me he's taking care of it. So I'm sorry that that's not fair. We have another issue. I have, I live on Riviera Circle. Two kids in my neighborhood drive to school. So, that's crazy, if you ask me, but that's what they do, because it's cool to park and have your lunch in your car. Does it make sense as, as a parent of, but, that, so those two issues, I'm sorry that we sound heartless, but things are crazy. If kids are driving from our neighborhood, I get that you need to drive from Tiburon, but I don't get the other piece. And I also... I don't know, I lost my train of thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Freddie, please. Means testing, I suppose. Any other speakers on this item? Let's, let's count them.
Hi, um, you don't sound heartless.
Freddie, you're the last speaker.
Um, you don't sound heartless.
This gentleman.
We, um, understand the problem, um, and it's definitely, like, the safety concern is the biggest problem, but, um, credit to Mr. Sonheim, we have received, I think, one to two emails a year, um, at least, about the parking, and we've been told several times not to park in the circle. Um, we're just finally taking action on it, um, to make sure that we can cut it down. So we, we've, but, I don't want it to seem like we haven't been aware of the problem. The students have been aware of the problem. Um, there just hasn't been, um, really, like, a, a reason or, like, a super enforced, um, way to make the students not park there. Um, but, yeah, we have received emails regarding the problem.
Thank you. Yes, sir, did you want to make a comment? Looks like he's on top of it.
So, hello, my name's...
Everything's fine. You're among friends.
My name's Bradley Williams. I go to Hall Middle School. My name's Bradley Williams, and I just wanted to say, in response to the Redwood school system about the bus transit and other years, uh, I, Hall Middle School actually has another bus route, and a lot of my friends take it, and so do I. And I'm just saying, about a third of the school takes the public transit, and it makes it so, uh, bike, biking and, uh, bus transit takes over about two-thirds of the public transportation at, to schools. So I think it works really great, and I think if you could get more bus routes and I, to school, and just, and make sure the bus routes are more public, and that more people know about them, that it could help the community parking and, and just getting to, people getting to school easier.
Thank you very much. That's a great idea. All right, we're gonna close with, with that. Thank you, everybody, for coming, telling us what you think this evening. We know it's a challenge, uh, it looks, uh, like one-size-can't-fit-all. We'll have to take all these comments into careful consideration and make sure that we don't take action that isn't, uh, taking into account all the, all the impacts that spill out. So with that, we're gonna close, uh, the special meeting. We're gonna take a break and reconvene as a regular meeting in five minutes.
Fifteen.
Fifteen minutes, sorry.
We gave you a little window there.
So it'll be, uh, six, six forty-five. We'll now reconvene as the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Um, I assume we have, we have to take another roll call? I'm okay if we don't.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Chu?
Here.
Um, Mayor Hillmer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Um, and Councilmember Haroff?
Ah. Councilmember Haroff is joining us by teleconference. So we will, uh, now, uh, please rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Uh, the first item on this evening's agenda is public comment. Are there, are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
Cindy.
Three minutes per speaker.
Cindy Winter. Last week, I attended a Corte Madera Planning Commission study session about a memory care residence proposed for Lucky Drive. The residents will be physically healthy, only their minds will be failing. They will wear electronic bracelets and cannot leave the facility without a minder, such as a family member or staff. They cannot drive. Many will enjoy walking. Lucky Drive at Pfeiffer is at Times and Intersection from Hell for cyclists and pedestrians. That is in Corte Madera. But a short distance away is the often dangerous Lucky Doherty intersection by the Redwood East Parking Lot that is in Larkspur. Based on what I heard last week, the Planning Commission is enthusiastic about the memory care project, and while they recognize that much due diligence lies ahead, they would like to make it work. Assuming the town council eventually gives prior approval, Larkspur should explore joining with Corte Madera to create a twin cities Lucky Drive Improvement District. Funding sources may react more favorably to two united projects than to two projects presented singly, and the twin cities would have a compelling story. One major ADA facility, older adults whose minds are contracting, and one major Safe Roots facility for teens whose minds are expanding. Both groups require and merit extra protection at these dangerous intersections, and I hope the council will keep this possibility in mind.
Thank you for your comments, Cindy. Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding items not on this evening's agenda? All right, we'll pu, close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that council members would wish to remove for questioning or further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Then a motion, is there a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
We're gonna do a roll call vote, since there's a council member on, via teleconference.
Very good. Conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Way?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Chu?
Aye.
Councilmember Morrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Haroff?
Yes.
And Mayor Hillmer?
Yes. The consent calendar passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda this evening is the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items for you this evening. First, uh, for the benefit of those who may not have been here in the previous hour, the council conducted a workshop on, uh, the preferential parking program ordinance, and, uh, took some general commentary from the public, and we anticipate bringing back an item for your discussion at either your next meeting or your meeting in December. Um, there were some questions raised that we'll need to address to prepare for the next agenda item on the topic, and we'll make sure notice gets out, um, as we move forward. Um, some of the public members, members of the public and some of the council have asked for an update on what's going on with the Smart Station work that's occurring, so we've reached out to Smart, and we, uh, tentatively anticipate them coming to your January meeting, um, of the council. There will only be one meeting in January, because the New Year's right around, uh, Wednesday, so it really won't work well to, to have a, a meeting, um, right after the New Year. Uh, and that's a segue into a reminder that you only have one meeting scheduled for November, because the third Wednesday happens to fall right before the fourth Thursday, and we assumed you and most of the public aren't interested in a city council meeting on the night before Thanksgiving. So, uh, we're only gonna have the one meeting in November. And then on a positive note, just wanted to, um, thank, uh, the Friends of the Library and numerous members of our staff who worked together to, uh, pull off an event this past Saturday, a version of Antiques Roadshow that I think was a, a big success. They're very pleased with the outcome. Got a very nice thank you note from the Friends for the contributions, uh, the library staff and the public works staff to help facilitate that event. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and the council members.
Thank you very much. Questions of the city manager on his report this evening? Councilmember Way?
Um, Dan, I just wanted, uh, a follow-up a little on the sidebar kind of...
Dan, I just wanted, uh, a follow-up a little on the sidebar kind of comment or discussion we were having about the Bonner Bridge update. Um, I was at Corbett's today, and it's complicated over there. And I'm wondering if we have a plan for, um, assessing the impact of our construction on those businesses? Like, a specific, um, outreach to them or plan to see how we're affecting their customer base? I'm a little concerned that some of those businesses, we may not, we, they may be more significantly impacted, and I wondered how we're, how we're reaching out to them.
Throughout the planning process for the bridge work, we made numerous touches to the immediate commercial, retail, and residential neighborhoods around the bridge. We continue to do as much outreach as we can. We're now in an active construction situation based on all the constraints that have been placed on the construction project. While we listen, we get a lot of folks who have some very interesting suggestions on how we could be doing things better, and in some cases, we've made adjustments based on that public feedback. Uh, and our project team's out there every day, looking at what's happening to try to facilitate as best as possible the movement through the area. We have an active construction zone for a thirty million dollar project.
Right.
And as much as I want to try to accommodate everybody's concerns, the number one thing is that project has to happen, it has to happen effectively, and it has to happen safely. And Mr. Skinner, your Public Works Director, works really hard with his team to meet those parameters. Um, and unfortunately, there's going to be effects. And, um, we ask folks to pay attention to the signage. A lot of the complaints that we get are for folks who want to do something other than what the signage is telling them to do. And a lot of the complaints we're getting directly are, what I want to do is more logical than what you've told me is the safe thing to do. And I've gotten a little cynical over the years about some, about folks' understanding of their own personal safety, because I've seen folks do some amazing things around construction zones. Um, and I encourage everybody to be patient. It, and now, to your specific question of the impact on businesses, um, there are impacts on the businesses, we're trying to mitigate them. I would say Corbett's probably bears a higher brunt than the others because it's a pure retail operation. Most of the other businesses that are being directly affected are not that pure retail storefront business, at least right in that immediate construction zone. There's certainly ancillary impact, uh, up and down Magnolia. Um, I think Mr. Skinner and his staff are open to suggestions, but, um, our number one priority at this point is to accommodate the community's demand that the bridge stay open, which creates a lot of necessity for us to manage that zone differently than we might otherwise have had we closed the bridge.
Right. Have we considered, and I don't know, maybe this is Public Works, have we considered sort of those flashing open stores, open for business signs that, that would help direct people to realize that that corner is still a functioning retail space, that they can still stop in there and go and do their business there? I just didn't see anybody in the store, and I was just feeling a little, um, I, I just want to make sure that we are not disproportionately impacting that corner of, of shops and, um, other spaces there.
If I may offer some information, I, uh, sit with Mr. Corbett on the Ross Fairleigh Paramedic Authority Board of Directors, and I see him every thirty days regularly, and we talk about the situation every thirty days when I see him. His comments to me most recently are that he, uh, certainly understands the situation and has the long view that the outcome of the repaired and reopened bridge, uh, is worth the effort, you know, working with the city to see that it happens, and, and they certainly understand the impacts.
Okay.
Yeah, um, we haven't looked at your specific question, and we could certainly bounce that around a bit at staff level.
Okay.
We're in the period of a massive construction project where a lot of folks are requesting special accommodations for all sorts of things, and one here, one there, and I, and all of them matter. All of them are, are totally valid. Every resident who feels impacted by that bridge, their concern is totally valid. Every business who has a concern, completely valid concern. But if we start accommodating all of them, our thirty million dollar project's going to be thirty-one, thirty-two.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Because all those things start to really add up. And in the meantime, I would, I would submit that every day past four years that that project takes is more costly than anything else to the community. The tolerance for this project in three and a half years from now is going to be very limited. And if we announce that because of a variety of choices we made, we've pushed the project out longer, uh, people are going to ask, what exactly were those choices? And I don't want them to be ones that we can't explain.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you for that explanation. I just, uh, I grew up in a small pharmacy, and I know how, how little businesses, small, big impacts like this affect their bottom line dramatically, so...
I also come from a small business family. I totally understand, and, um, we can reach out to Mr. Corbett and talk to him if there's anything we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other, uh, questions or comments on the city manager's oral report? Are there council members' oral reports or comments this evening? Councilmember Chu?
Yes, uh, Vice Mayor Morrison asked me to report out on this. Uh, the two of us went to the Green Bay Property Owners Association annual meeting a couple weeks ago. And, uh, as we expected, the types of things they were most interested in, of course, are the Bonner Bridge, um, you know, how their streets are going to be repaired under Measure B. Uh, there were some questions about the, uh, slide repair project on Villa Lacourie, and, uh, most importantly, Chief Norton was there representing Central Marin Police, and he gave a report where he provided some feedback on the cut-through traffic on Villa Lacourie as it goes from Green Bay to San Rafael. And, uh, his report was really not surprising to me, having done a traffic study in our neighborhood. And, uh, I think he said about half the people who are acting badly actually live in the neighborhood. So can't blame it all on San Rafael commuters.
Can I add on to that?
Sure.
It was really well represented, too. We had Supervisor Katie Rice there, along with the Sheriff of County and the, and the Highway Patrol. Um, anyway, it was pretty impressive with all the individuals that care about that area and, uh, represented it. So thank you, Larry. I also want to talk about the, um, I went to the Marin County, um, Councilmember Homeless Committee, uh, meeting with Dan Schwartz, our city manager. It's pretty impressive. Um, we talked about there is now a Marin Mobile Care Showers that's going around to certain areas. It will be coming to Larkspur and Corte Madera for those that are homeless or those that are living out of their cars, they can, um, take a shower, wash their clothes, and feel a little bit better about themselves, and hopefully, um, get them back, back together. There's also something called Open Doors Marin. Please look it up. It's a pretty impressive website through Marin County. Uh, their, their goal is to eliminate chronic homelessness in Marin by 2020, and it's really cool what's happening in Marin County. It's called coordinated entry. So now we're coordinating with the Ritter House, St. Vincent de Paul, Homeward Bound. We're getting all those that come to the services, we're getting, they're getting them into a database, we're figuring out their needs. So we're, all of us are working finally together versus separate identities. So it's pretty exciting for Marin County, because it's going to help resolve the homelessness, uh, situation and population a lot quicker than it has in the past. I also want to give a shout-out for the North Magnolia Winter Event. It's going to be the businesses on, in North Magnolia is going to hold a winter event. Um, they're going to decorate, each business is going to have Christmas lights on their buildings and decorate wreaths and just try to get the community involved in North Magnolia, and that is going to be held on November the tenth. So I hope we have a lot of people coming to that event. Thank you.
Other council member reports this evening? Uh, I just have one reminder to the Meadowwood Heather Gardens Neighborhood Response Group. Uh, we're setting up for a November fourth, uh, drill, so, uh, your block captains will be in touch. Thank you. Councilmember Haroff, do you have any council member reports this evening?
Just briefly, uh, and I appreciate, uh, Jamie's efforts in particular in making the arrangements to allow me to participate in this meeting remotely. I've never done this before. I don't think I've ever been at a ma, meeting where we've had somebody participate remotely, so this is a nice little experiment, and I appreciate that. The reason that I'm not able to attend is I'm up in Sacramento, um, with colleagues from MCE Clean Energy, attending the annual CAISO, which is the California Independent System Operator Symposium, which is probably the largest, um, uh, assembly of folks interested in the, uh, California, and more generally, the Western Electricity Grid. Uh, we're certainly hearing a lot of very interesting presentations about, um, grid operations, um, uh, transportation electrification, um, uh, battery storage issues, uh, lots of really cutting-edge stuff. So it's a very interesting, uh, opportunity to learn more about the operation of our California electricity grid and market system. The other thing I'll just mention, on October ninth, um, I joined, uh, Julian, uh, for a meeting, uh, a community meeting, uh, the Marina Neighborhood Property Owners Association, uh, which was over at the community, uh, meeting room next to Jason's in Green Bay. Um, it was a very, very well-attended meeting. I was really kind of, um, impressed, uh, by the large numbers of people. We essentially had a packed room, and that's not a small room. Julian really represented the city well in terms of addressing concerns that, um, that community has about parking, um, from a variety of different perspectives. You may have heard some of those concerns expressed at your pre-meeting, uh, today, so I'm not going to go into the, the details on it, but, uh, it was a well-attended meeting. There's a very energized community over there. Uh, and as I said, Julian did a great job in, uh, providing information and responding to community concerns.
All right, thank you very much. Other council member comments on this? All right, we'll move to the, uh, public hearing this evening, which is consideration of ordinance number one zero two six, adding a chapter numbered eight dash ten, Regulation of Massage Businesses to the Larkspur Municipal Code. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Hillmer, members of the council. My name is Shannon O'Hare, and I'm the Assistant to the City Manager. So this evening, staff brings before you, um, the introduction and the first reading of ordinance one zero two six, adding chapter eight point ten, Regulation of Massage Businesses to the Larkspur Municipal Code. Um, at the April fourth, two thousand eighteen city council meeting, we brought in ordinance revising the city's massage regulation to update the practices of the city to bring them in line with recently adopted state law, current practices in the massage therapy profession, and changes to city processes related to business license issuance and code enforcement. At that time, staff was given direction to refine the ordinance in order to address recommended additions to the ordinance from members of the public and the city council during the public hearing. Subsequent to the April fourth, two thousand eighteen meeting, staff received feedback from the massage community as well as members of the public, and has made additional changes to the ordinance in order to provide some flexibility the city determined is necessary for successful code enforcement related to the massage businesses while maintaining the important parameters and requirements of said businesses should code enforcement be necessary. So the Cliff Notes version in a fairly dense ordinance to highlight the changes that were made. Um, one, we modified some of the language in the code to provide more flexibility for massage businesses. Um, this includes notifications to staff and when massage businesses are required to do that. We moved it from, uh, a parameter of every seventy-two hours when certain changes are made to actually doing it for when the license renewal happens. Um, I talked extensively with the city attorney and our planning director, Planning and Building Director Neil Toft, and we felt that for our needs and for our community, that's sufficient at this time, and if it needs to be revisited, we can do that at a further date. The second change is the ordinance, uh, contains language that addresses concerns raised about the treatment of libidinous liability partnerships, and refined that language. And the third is the ordinance contains language that explicitly prohibits inappropriate touching of massage, um, from massage therapists to clients. Um, the existing ordinance only enumerated inappropriate touching of the clients, and after receiving some additional feedback from the community, there, on the dais, there should be some amended language that we can add. Sky will do the honors to actually change the ordinance to make that even more explicit should we decide to move forward, um, with the ordinance this evening, to make that clear. There is no immediate fiscal impact associated with the passage of the ordinance at this time should council decide to adopt the ordinance. Um, any increases in staff time is anticipated to be offset by the establishment of a permit fee for massage businesses, um, which will be created with adoption of this ordinance once it's implemented. So with that, that's the conclusion of my verbal staff report. If council has any questions.
And just to clarify, this is a, a waving of the first reading and introduction of the ordinance, correct?
Right.
All right, so are there questions of staff from the council on this item?
I was just going to add to the answer about the, the staff recommendation is that if the council is satisfied with the ordinance tonight with any changes you want to make, that, that, um, as Shannon mentioned, there's also a red line on the dais that adds an additional sentence to section eight dot ten dot zero five zero. And so the staff recommendation includes introducing the ordinance with that additional sentence.
Correct.
All right. Have council members had time to read the proposed amendment? Are there questions of staff regarding the staff report or the change? Catherine?
Shannon, this is very, um, well-done. Thank you for this. I reflected back on our April conversation and a lot of the public comment that came through, um, at that particular time. I appreciate how you've, you've incorporated that. So, um, I'm, um, I think this addition of the red line, um, or, and the additional operating requirements is probably very appropriate based on some of the public comment that we had at that night. So, thank you for doing that. I didn't see anything else that stood out to me other than, um, that we've now updated our, our ordinance to meet current law and current concerns of this industry. So, thank you.
Council questions? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this agenda item? Yes, sir?
Yes.
Please step to the microphone, identify yourself for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eric Lichtplau. I spoke before you, I think, six months ago when this came up. Um, and I, I want to first start by, by thanking the city manager for adding the red line portion in front of you. I think that's a very important addition. I, I still think there's more that can be done, and you may recall what I came before was to say, you know, this is, this ordinance was originally created to combat prostitution, which is, of course, very, very important, and I support that. But I thought we could add things to also combat sexual assault. So this addition to, uh, is a good start. But there's a few other things that I think could easily be done. For example, um, section, uh, ten dot forty, um, requires reporting things to the, uh, planning director, um, but we've got in section ten dot fifty, certain prohibitions against, um, prostitution and, and now sexual assault, and it seems to me it'd be very easy to add a provision that also requires when, when that's violated, that to be reported to the police, so that those actual crimes can be investigated by the police rather than just the, the city planner being able to revoke a license. So I, you know, in, in ten dot, uh, fifty, a new clause could be added that says, uh, all massage business operators must report allegations that a massage practitioner violated, um, section eight dot ten dot five zero, uh, C, the one with the red line, um, to the police within twenty-four hours, seventy-two hours, whatever is deemed appropriate. Another, um, change that I thought would be very useful, um, the, the, as drafted, the ordinance requires that the pre, massage, uh, this massage certificates be posted, um, in the place of business, but as we all know, most days, people use the internet to find where to get a massage. And, and you, you go to people's websites, you look up their practices, and by the time you get there, you're not likely to do anything other than check in. So the website, if they're going to list the names of the practitioners, should also have the same requirement. So it'd be simple to add something that says, any advertising by a business that identifies the practitioner employed by the business shall include the practitioner's full name, C A M, C A M T, uh, T C certificate number. So I think, you know, in today's day and age where most people are doing things through the internet and where you can in fact book appointments through the internet, that's kind of information should be on any advertising that is describing the practitioners. Um, and I know there are some places that don't do that. I mean, they, they'll say Joseph and have a biography, but they won't give a last name, they don't- a biography, but they won't give a last name, they don't give the certificate, they don't give anybody the ability to see this additional information that's being required to be posted at the actual site. Later in that section, there's a provision that requires that each, the business keeps a complete legible written record, and it's supposed to include the date and hour of the service provided, the service received, the name and initials of the employee. I think that record, it'd be very simple to also require them to document any allegations by clients that the massage practitioner violated any parts of this ordinance. I mean, that kind of requirement puts the onus on the operator to make sure that everything's being complied with and not to just ignore complaints. In a similar vein, in-
Yeah, I asked, do you have a summary of your suggestions?
Yes. Well, in fact, I have, I have them highlighted and redlined on the older version, but, so they don't track, but it's easy to track it to the new version. But these additions aren't in the new version. I didn't have the new version in Word, so I didn't have a chance to track them there. But I'm happy to leave this.
I would appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I'm very happy to do that.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Do you want to-
Oh, no, not at all.
-summarize your-
Yeah, I'll just share one last one. One of the things that's required to report to the city planner is an event involving, any event involving the operator's massage business or the massage practitioners employed therein that constitutes a violation of this chapter. I'm a lawyer. I know how people can argue these things. An operator might say, "Somebody complained, and I didn't believe them, so I didn't have to report that because that wasn't an event." I think it should just have any event or complaint by customer of an event, so that it's not up to some business owner to decide whether it was credible. It's up to the city planner and you all to decide whether it was credible. And then the last one, which is marked here, is maybe a little bit tougher. But we thought it would be a good requirement that the massage practitioner not be allowed to be under the influence of alcohol or a mind-altering drug while doing the massage. That's a great way to help make sure they exercise good judgment and don't cross lines. And then I guess my last one is probably more symbolic, but I think symbolism is very important in these kinds of things. The whereas clause could add sexual assault as one of the things that this is designed to stop instead of just discouraging prostitution and the other things. You know, in today's day and age, just awareness is as powerful as everything. You know, we've got a district attorney who six years ago took rape kits out of Marin, so victims have to go to Vacaville, not Vacaville, Vallejo, when they're raped. And, you know, the candidates who are running right now are talking about that and maybe changing that. There's not a great track record of prosecuting crimes against women. And I think the symbolism of this city council making clear how important it is to this city maybe helps make it clear that it's important to the police and to our district attorneys and to everybody.
Thank you for your comments. We'd appreciate you leaving the copy with your suggestions. Councilmember Way has a question, and there may be other questions. Councilmember Way and then Councilmember Chu.
So to those, several of those issues, can you just tell me whether we have the authority for the law enforcement aspect to add that, or is that something that is, something that a city council ordinance and a municipal code can do? Several of those suggestions were involving what struck me as really a law enforcement.
I guess it might be easier if you cited, I'm not trying to answer that as a general question.
Since our law enforcement is separated from our code enforcement, how would we include some of those comments about investigating sexual assault or alleged sexual assault when we don't have the municipal code authority to do law enforcement investigations? Is that-
Yeah. I mean, I think that, I'm trying to figure out the, my view on this is that this is, this is primarily, I mean, while there is a regulatory aspect to this that's intended to avoid certain kinds of criminality or reduce the chances of it occurring, the actual violations of criminal law would be directed directly to the police, who would work with the district attorney to investigate and prosecute those if there's adequate evidence to substantiate the charges. So the function of the ordinance is in part deterrence, but it's also a permitting and regulatory regime that is, as you say, separate. So there, I mean, I believe that Shannon considered all of these proposals as part of drafting this, and she can answer this more fully, but also worked with the massage providers and made a judgment call about which ones were, could be incorporated that fit within the overall regulatory scheme, and which ones were better left, as you say, to-
To law enforcement.
To law enforcement.
Yeah. Shannon-
I'm not suggesting that you investigate the crimes, but one of the proposals was that one of the requirements be that the operator report crimes to the police, and then it would be up to the police to investigate. And then the other one where I was suggesting that we include complaints, that would relate to the ordinance-
Yeah.
So that if you hear a complaint, you can do your duty under, to withdraw the license or permits or whatever. So I wasn't, if I apologize if I made it seem like I was suggesting I wanted you to investigate crimes, that's not the suggestion, and that's not what I've drafted.
No, I understood that. I would just want to make sure we're not drafting something that we aren't, have the legal authority to deal with. So, yeah.
Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments? Excuse me. There was a gentleman back there who wanted to speak first. All right, you'll yield to her. All right, please.
My name is Su Young Kim, and I was attacked at Elements Massage in Green Bay in July of 2017, or was it 15, July 2015? I'm putting it long behind me. But when I reported my incident to the police, they made a phone call, didn't make a site visit, and they talked to the assistant manager who hired my assailant, and she told the responding officer that the guy had never had any complaints. Had there been a requirement for the recording of complaints, there would have been entirely different evidence, because when we filed the lawsuit because of the police department's complete reluctance to investigate and the DA's reluctance to investigate, what we found out was that in addition to his three prior criminal convictions, we deposed the assistant manager, and she said that 20% of his clients complained. This was sworn testimony, totally, completely in contradiction to the testimony given by the lead manager. We had another employee say the same thing. If there had been an ordinance that massage studios were to keep records of complaints, this would just not have been an issue, and maybe the police would have been more motivated to investigate. But in fact, what they did was make a phone call to the assailant and the person who hired him, and that was the end of their investigation.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
James Holmes, Larkspur. First, I have a question for staff, and that is, where, could staff cite the section which prohibits the inappropriate touching of massage therapists by the client? Could that section be cited? I couldn't find it, and maybe because my, I didn't have my reading glasses on, but I couldn't find that section.
So it's under operating requirements, so 8.10.50, under Section C.
Okay. No massage will be given unless the client's-
Adenomical is covered. A massage practitioner shall not, in the course of administering, make physical contact with the, but does that, does that, does that preclude the, does that prevent the inappropriate touching of the massage therapist? It prevents the massage therapist from touching the, from touching the person being massaged, but I'm not sure it works the other way around.
Right. So that's a, that's a great point. Under what we suggested would be part of the change in the ordinance tonight, there were copies available in the back of the room, and it's at the dais.
I did get that. I didn't see it there either, to tell you the truth. Anyway, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the existing language does explicitly prohibit the inappropriate touching of massage therapists. So if that's the intent, I think perhaps that specific language should be added in 050.
Might we get a clarification from the city attorney?
That is in the red line text that is on the dais.
So it does, in fact, cover that?
Yes. The addition that we, that we've proposed would prohibit the touching of inappropriate areas of massage.
Okay. All right. Second point is that on item or Section 8.10.040B2, 8.10.040B2, that is blank.
That's a copy editing error.
It's just, it's just a typo from track changes that will be addressed through it, before the ordinance gets codified.
Okay. So that, in other words, the text, that's now three, should be two?
Yes. The paragraph numbering didn't update when the changes were accepted.
Okay, thank you. I would suggest the possibility of adding a definition in the definition sections of massage practitioner. Maybe it's self-evident, but the term massage practitioner is used extensively and particularly in connection with operating requirements, so it might be useful to include that definition. My last comment is, please add the word buttocks to the definition of specified adenomical areas in 8.10.010X. 8.10.010X defines specified adenomical areas. It doesn't include the word buttocks. However, it's necessary to include that, not only in order to have consistency with the operating requirements section, .050, but also to avoid a real odd aberration whereby, under the current text, I believe, one could massage the buttocks all one wanted, as long as the buttocks were covered and one didn't touch the anuses. I'm sorry to get into this, but with this kind of an ordinance, it should be tight. If you look at the operating requirements on .050, you will see that there's a prohibit, there's a requirement that all the specified adenomical areas be, that be covered. And it also says, "The massage practitioner shall not, in the course of administering any massage, make physical contact with the specified adenomical area." But that, and it also requires that the, they can't dress in a manner that exposes a person's breast, buttocks, or genitals. But as you can see, if you read all those together, the buttocks can be massaged because it's not part of the specified adenomical areas, only the anus is. So-
In the interest of equal time for additional speakers, James, I'm going to ask that you summarize.
That's my last point, but I would, again, add buttocks to the definition of specified adenomical area.
I just wanted to clarify to the council that that term is defined in state law as part of the state licensing scheme for, for massage therapy. We just, we are using the state definition, and I, I guess, I am not a, I am not a regular receiver of massage, but I believe that it regularly includes massaging of the buttocks. So I, I don't, I would just, I just want to let the council know that we're just following the state definition in this regard.
This is a night where I really like my job. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Councilmember Chu.
Well, not to add more levity to this, but people who have sciatica conditions do need to have that portion of their body massaged.
Yeah.
So there may be some therapeutic benefits from that, and I don't know how to deal with the wording here. I'm just telling you something that I've had to experience firsthand.
I also wanted to let the council know that massage practitioner is defined, it's under the definition of certified massage practitioner. There are places in the ordinance that we just use massage practitioner. The state law goes back and forth between the two, but it is defined.
Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions regarding this agenda item? All right. We're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Way, would you like to start the discussion?
I just wanted to respond to a couple of the things that the speaker has brought up. So there were a few suggestions about additions to the ordinance. One was that the massage practitioners, that they would be listed online, their full names and where they practice. Also on the dais tonight is, we got some feedback from the massage therapy community that there was even some concerns about a full name being present at the place of business for the public to see. So we've talked a lot about tonight about the potential for assault and for illegal activity for the client, but there's also a concern in the massage community that it's one of the professions where you're more vulnerable to being stalked by clients or for people to try to do illegal things to you if you're an above-the-board certified massage practitioner soliciting you for prostitution. That's the other side, right? On the, on the sexual assault, it comes out from both angles. Both of you are in the, in the business, and if you're a client. So we took that into consideration. Additionally, assault is always illegal in Larkspur, regardless of what an ordinance calls out or says. One of the ways that we addressed reporting assault, and particularly the planning department having to report assault, is in Section 10.040. There's language in there, and I understand where it's easy to look over it because it's legalese, but it does give us this authority to report any violations to law enforcement. So it's in 8.10.040C. So any event involving the operator's massage business or the massage practitioners employed therein that constitutes a violation of this chapter or state or federal law, I know where that's easy to overlook, and there was some talk about the symbolism and the purpose as well of the ordinance, but that would cover sexual assault of all kinds for us to report it. Are there any other questions of council?
So I, okay, sorry. So repeat, so the full name of the practitioner, they don't want their full name? So can you-
So, right, so like when you get, so like cosmetologists, taxi drivers, certain professions, you have your license and you have to display it in a public place, right, to show that you're certified?
Yes.
So one of the pieces of feedback we got, and it's a concern for massage practitioners, if somebody can see your full name, and they have an approximation of where you work and where you live, that that would potentially allow a client or even someone who just comes into the business to know a whole lot of information about you, and then maybe approach you outside of work hours or even within work hours.
But don't they have the information on their website?
Not necessarily. And also, it's, privacy is an ever-evolving and changing area. It's very easy to find information now on the internet, especially if you want to look about, just about anybody. But how available you make that, where you direct, you know, how you direct people to private information. We kept that in the ordinance to display the license, partially because of concerns from people who get massages, to actually see that you're at a reputable place where the person actually is certified, et cetera.
Right. Okay.
Larry?
Yeah, there was a suggestion that there be an inclusion about being under the influence of alcohol. I think the language is mind-altering drugs, but I would say any controlled substance, if you're going to lump it all together. But what is the, let's just say, standard practice that they have in terms of other regulatory agencies on whether being under the influence of anything is already prohibited or not?
Well, any, I'm saying, most mind-altering drugs are illegal, so any drug is illegal if you're at work or anywhere, right? So that's covered by other laws. For things like alcohol or illegal marijuana or other kinds of substances, I'd have to actually look if there's a code of conduct in CAMTC or some, some kind of provision there. That would be something for staff to look into.
Yeah, because if it's already covered someplace else, I don't think it needs to be redundantly put in ours.
And just to bring up a point, intoxication may be something that would be easier to tell, but it would be very hard to, to regulate that, particularly for planning or even CMPA, to be able to tell if somebody was under the influence and if it was a mind-altering drug or kind of influence.
Okay, thank you.
Other council comments? Discussion of a motion?
Without, without all the changes in front of me.
Well, the staff recommendation includes the red-marked version. Are there additional- Well, the staff recommendation includes the red-marked version. Are there additional comments? Council wants to consider in addition to those recommended by staff?
Well, it sounds like, Shannon, that with the gentleman that mentioned a few concerns, you've already had it covered in different wordings.
That's staff's position.
Go ahead, Larry.
Well, I'm okay making a.
No, I was going to say I'm fine with staff's recommendations.
Me too. So are you making a motion, Larry?
I can move to way first reading of ordinance ten twenty-eight, or was it six? Ten twenty-six. Including the red line revisions that have been made by the assistant city manager.
And I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. All votes in favor of the motion signify.
We need to roll a call vote.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Councilmember Chu?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Yes.
And Councilmember Harrow?
Yes.
And Mayor Helmer?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Shannon, very much.
Nice job, Shannon.
The next business item on this evening's agenda is an update of the Larkspur 2050 capital expenditure plan. May we have a staff report, please?
I think you jumped on, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss an item?
Yeah.
Oh, a eight point, I'm sorry. We'll move back to eight point one. Amendment of the joint powers agreement with the town of Cordermadera for the Central Marin Fire Authority. My apologies. May we have a staff report, please?
I see there's some representatives, our fire personnel in the audience.
Sorry, guys.
I know last night they listened to Cordermadera unanimously pass the same resolution, but I'm sure the item ahead of it was not nearly as entertaining as ours was. I suspect that for the average resident of the Twin City community, Cordermadera and Larkspur, there's the belief that the merger of the Cordermadera Fire Department and the Larkspur Fire Department is all done. We have beautiful trucks that say Central Marin Fire. Our staff are all wearing Central Marin Fire. And frankly, from a practitioner's standpoint and what's happening on the ground, we are merged. But in the wonderful world of government, we still have hoops that we're jumping through. And we're jumping through a huge one tonight, so it's pretty exciting. Last year in August, we brought you a resolution to form the Joint Powers Authority, the legal vehicle that would allow the two fire departments to merge. At that time, we told you we were hoping to fast-track the approval process of two other entities that are needed to finish the merger. One was CALPERS, the California Public Employees Retirement System, which needed to approve the language pertaining to how the pension program would be handled within the Joint Powers Authority and how the staff would be moved over to that arrangement. And the second was LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. We worked very hard. We got the LAFCO process where it was going to be nice and streamlined, and then we got thrown a huge curveball by CALPERS, which we've talked about several times here, but we have an audience that may not be familiar with it, and that's that joint powers authorities are essentially contracts between agencies to do business together, do government business together. And unfortunately, in Southern California, there was a dissolution of joint powers authority, and there was no provision for what to do about the employees and the benefits that had been promised to them. And that included their CALPERS benefits. And so CALPERS, in its own style, which means very heavy-handedly, put a stop to the formation of joint powers authorities and the issuance of contracts that would allow you to move your employees under a new joint powers authority agreement. Bad timing for us. We were probably like two months too late. We could have just slipped through before they did that. As you've heard several times from me, tremendous thanks to the town manager, Cordermadera, Taka Kuzumana, who's done a lot of heavy lifting and allowed me to come in and sort of join him as the white knight as we fought the valiant fight with CALPERS. And also kudos to your city attorney, Sky Woodruff, and the legal team that represents Cordermadera. Because I would say we, along with one other group of entities down on the peninsula, fought the fight for the state to get CALPERS to see that they needed to do something to resolve this issue because this is affecting good governance and it's affecting the ability to deliver good service at a better price for the public. So I'm happy to say the language in front of you is the compromise language that we've worked out with CALPERS, that it's our understanding that if we submit this language, they will bless it, and we will have checked one of those final two boxes to finish the merge process from a legal standpoint. We've met with LAFCO and we've got their process back on track. And so with your action tonight, we anticipate that all of our fire personnel from our two agencies will truly be under one umbrella on January first of 2019. They will continue between now and then to seamlessly offer service, appearing as one agency, but they truly will be on January one. And not to put pressure on you, but last night Cordermadera said many wonderful things, the council, and then unanimously passed this agenda. We're super excited. I keep teasing the chief. I'm super excited to get rid of him. He can go work for the other agency that we're forming. But all kidding aside, I don't think this could have gone any better. I just, other than this hiccup with CALPERS, our guys have worked really hard to make this seamless. And the public is only seeing the benefits as we grow stronger as a fire prevention agency. So we're really excited and ask that you approve this action tonight so we can turn in our application to CALPERS and get this behind us.
We have a resolution for consideration before us on this item. Are there questions of the city manager?
This has been a Herculean effort, I'd like to say, by everybody, including our city managers and our fire chief and our fire personnel. So I really appreciate that we're finally to this point. I'm sorry it's taken this long because I think, as you say, we were seamlessly, our EMS service has been seamlessly providing to our businesses and our residents for a number of years. We've just had to go through this hurdle. But when I go to the league conferences, this is being watched by a lot of other communities, and we're sort of setting, we're the pace setters in this. And I think we should be really proud of ourselves for having sat in Bob Ravazio's, Larry and myself and Michael Lappert, having a little joint pow-wow about how we could try to make these two towns work together in this matter. So I don't see any changes that need to be, and I completely appreciate and approve of this, so.
Are there council member questions? I'm going to ask for any public comment. It's a business item. We don't normally take public comment, but I'll take any comments from the public on this item. Kevin? Kevin has questions?
Yes.
All right.
So for the city manager, first of all, I want to express my complete agreement with Councilmember Way's comments. When this issue first came up, it was kind of frightening. It had implications that extended well beyond our joint powers agreement, as everyone else in the state apparently has now recognized. So this is a real accomplishment. The question that I have is that it looks like the language envisions that upon the occasion of certain events, it would change the existing structure, like oil crawl or other events. Members must enter into negotiations to restructure the allocation of responsibilities. Is that fair?
Yes, so for the benefit of the public, Councilmember Harrow wants clarification that the way the agreement is drafted, if for some reason the parties were, one of the parties wanted to leave the joint powers authority, there would need to be some agreement on how the liabilities, particularly the pension liabilities, would be handled upon dissolution. That's the cornerstone of what we negotiated with CALPERS, that language. It frankly works pretty cleanly for Larkspur and Cordermadera because that's how we were going to do it anyway. It was just writing that language in a manner that CALPERS found acceptable. It may be more challenging for other agencies to go to Councilmember Way's comment of those watching us as you talk about joint powers authorities with multiple members that may have different levels of investment in the joint power system. We have two members with equal investment, so to simply say, when we dissolve, we will equally owe against our liabilities is a simple solution that we would anticipate. I hope that answered the question, Councilmember Harrow.
Well, it does to some extent, and you're right. I was kind of having in my mind the issues that other joint powers authorities that might have this issue presented to them, where there are multiple members, and the negotiation about the allocation of liabilities might be more complex. So I guess my question is, in this case or in general, using methodology that is a disagreement with the body has potentially applied to other JPAs, is there a default that would result in the event that the negotiated allocation of liabilities, the negotiation was not successful?
Yeah, so Councilmember Harrow, again, for the benefit of the public, he wanted some clarification, not just specific to our joint powers agreement, but in general, how this would work for any joint powers authority or what. Or I'll actually add to your question, Councilmember Harrow. Maybe down the road, there might be another party that wants to join Central Marin, much like Central Marin Fire, much like happened with the police. So to go to your question, on parallel track to the negotiations that were occurring for what should happen with a new joint powers authority, CALPERS worked within the legislative process to get Assembly Bill 1912 passed, which the governor has now signed, which applies to existing joint powers authorities because a lot of them don't necessarily have any language in their contract, speaking to this question of what happens when members want to leave. Most do. Most foresaw that as a problem, but a handful don't. And so the way that CALPERS language, the way the language in AB 1912 is written, it states that the parties have a period of time to draft an agreement on how they would dissolve and how they would spread the liabilities out upon dissolution or upon the departure of one member. If they can't come to an agreement, the legislature gave CALPERS the authority, at least with the respect to pension liability, to impose a split of the shares of liability. So it really puts a fear into the members to do it themselves because you don't necessarily want CALPERS to make that decision for you. With the new joint powers authority, you'll see we've essentially made a commitment very similar to that by upfront saying how we would go through the process of sharing that liability. And that's what CALPERS wants to see from newly-formed joint powers authorities going forward. So again, going back to Councilmember Way's comment, we and the three entities that are working on this on the peninsula really take seriously that we are agreeing to something with CALPERS that probably sets a precedent for every other agency or group of agencies that comes forward to form a joint powers authority. They will probably be required by CALPERS to accept substantially, substantially similar language to what we're agreeing to. So in that respect, this is not a small thing that you're doing because you are going first, and so you're setting a big precedent statewide. That's a rarity for Larkspur.
It's very impressive the work we're doing and that we've accomplished this result. I only ask these questions because, you know, not to take away from the accomplishment of where we are, but out of a fear that CALPERS, in the absence of agreements that are satisfactory to all parties, that they could come in and kind of reimpose what they think they need in terms of joint several liability, which would be not a good outcome.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council on the staff report? Are there members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this item? Yes, sir. Three minutes.
James Holmes, Larkspur, just two questions. Number one, is it, is it correct to understand that in the event of dissolution, the parties could not, each party could not be held responsible for more than 50% of the pension liabilities?
As currently drafted, that's correct.
I mean, I know that sometimes joint and several liability can be understood to mean one party can actually be held responsible for all of the liabilities. But I understand that they can't be forced, under this version, they can't be forced to have more than 50%. Okay, that's very good because another version of joint and several liability could mean something else. So I think this is very well done in that case. And one other question, why is Cordermadera always the JUA's clerk and CFO?
I'm sorry?
Why is Cordermadera always the specified as?
Ah, why are they going to be the fiscal officer for the entity?
Clerk and CFO.
Yeah, so the speaker's question is why Cordermadera is identified to provide the officer positions that support the fire council, specifically the secretary or clerk and the financial officer. So first, for the benefit of those who aren't really familiar with this section of law, any member agency can provide those services. We provide them for the police department, and so we thought mutually with Cordermadera, why don't they provide them for the fire department?
Other comments or questions for members of the public regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for consideration of adoption of the resolution. Further discussion from the council? Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, I just also want to thank our staff, Cordermadera's staff, council, firefighters on both sides. Yeah, it has been a long road. Whether we're the first and there are more, that's hard to say considering we've had the CMPA since 1980. And I believe that that's still the only police JPA of its type. So, but I'm glad we've done it and I'm ready to support this resolution.
I just want to express my appreciation to the firefighters. This would not have even started the conversation without their expression of willingness and effort to do this together. It started from the firefighters themselves. It would not have happened without their teamwork. So that's a big deal. Thank you.
And it's a perfect marriage. It's great, you guys. Congratulations. And I love your new badges. We're very excited about this consolidation. More of it.
So I'll move resolution.
Sure.
Seventy-nine, I'll move resolution seventy-nine eighteen. The resolution, the city council authorizing the mayor to sign the amended Central Marin Fire Authority Joint Powers Agreement between the town of Cordermadera and the city of Larkspur. Set.
I'd like to second that if I could.
We have a motion and a second, first by teleconference in my memory. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Oh, we need to do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Chu?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrow?
Yes.
And Mayor Helmer?
Yes, proudly, yes.
Yay! Raise the roof.
The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
One follow-up question. Dan, this, our next fire council, Central Marin Fire Council meeting is November first. This will be on the agenda for that, I hope?
Yes.
Okay, so if anybody wants to attend, it's November first, right after the Central Marin Police Council meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you want public safety, back-to-back nights are going to be the standard.
Back-to-back.
Back-to-back meetings are going to be the standard meeting format. So I think I'm the only one that's going to both on our side.
I'll be there.
All right.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an update of the Larkspur 2050 capital expenditure plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Bear with me, this will probably be the longest presentation of the evening. Get my notes together. So this is another report to you that's a long time in coming because the council first asked for an update of the 2050 plan in 2016. We started the process and we're sort of methodically marching through the process for quite a while and then got a bit derailed due to some of the other activities that staff and the. staff and the council were engaged in, and parked the 2050 plan update for a while, and we got it back on track this year, and we're very pleased to now have the update out into circulation to start this conversation about our infrastructure needs. We tend to call it the 2050 plan, its official title is the Larkspur 2050 Capital Expenditure Plan, and that's important, because I probably keep going back to just calling it the 2050 plan, but folks should be aware, there's a heavy focus in this document and this discussion about the concept of what it's gonna take to actually fund and pay for capital expense. So the 2050 plan was published in 2001, and it's available online. If folks haven't had a chance to read it, it was done by a committee of community leaders that attempted to create a very distinct document for Larkspur that would help envision the infrastructure needs of the community and how they would be paid for over the subsequent 50-year period. And all that context is important, because as we go through this, you want to keep the scale of the document's intent in mind, and what it is and it isn't. We'll talk about that in a little bit. This particular process was headed by a committee. That committee was Vice Mayor Morrison, Councilmember Hoff, and myself. We held periodic meetings. Brown Act means we're mostly by ourselves. That's okay. But in addition, staff, there's a lot of input in this document from staff. Staff's heavily represented tonight. I think most of your disciplines are here and happy to speak to specific questions you may have about the infrastructure they deal with on a regular basis. We also sought input from the library board, park and rec commission, and the Measure C Citizens Oversight Committee. That last group, just a reminder, Measure C was our sales tax measure, in which we heavily spent on roads. It's now been succeeded by the Measure B Citizens Oversight Committee. We went to them early in 2016 for some feedback on some of the commentary we would do about roads in the report. So to set the stage for this discussion, let's talk about what, at least for Dan Schwartz, the 2050 plan is. So I, for me, it's three things. It's, it's a vision document, and that's really important for folks to know. It's not a prescription, it's, it's a vision document. It's meant to give you context for discussing infrastructure. And I don't think that was ever the committee's intention, for it to be anything more than a tool, which is the second thing I've put up there, to give folks the ability, the information they needed to talk strategically about Larkspur's infrastructure needs and, and how we might go about financing them, without specifically solving the, the problems themselves. And that's largely due to the last point, which is it's a guidebook for everybody to use, so that we can inform our capital improvement plan, which is actually the plan where we talk about spending money, which the council looks at every year as part of its budgetary process, and we roll our capital improvement plan so that it looks five years out constantly, although with some projects, we, we know what our spending needs are gonna be even farther. So that's what I view the 2050 plan is to us. And there's two key things I want to emphasize that the 2050 plan is not. One is it's not the definitive list of every infrastructure need the city has. It's a global look at some of the big-ticket issues and categories of infrastructure needs. It doesn't get into the weeds of very specific, smaller projects. It doesn't get into the full detail of some of the things we might expect to come along from time to time. It stays on a very global level, and that's important, because we're trying to just do strategy. We're not trying to solve every single problem with the 2050 plan. But one of the fallbacks that, that folks need to be aware of is it is looking at these big-ticket issues, and it doesn't really discuss much or talk a whole lot about what exactly it would take to operate and maintain the infrastructure if we invest in it. And that is something we struggle with when we try to transition from the global vision to the CIP. If we're gonna spend these dollars, we don't want them to go wasted. We want to make sure that we've spent them smartly, and that we know how to then take care of what we've invested in. We made two sort of changes to the approach in the 2050 plan. One is the categories of infrastructure. I think that when the, and I, you know, I can't speak for the committee, I think Councilmember Chu can, from time to time, correct me if I stray too far from what I think happened, into his recollection of what actually happened. But I get the sense that the 2050 committee did get very focused on a very specific list of infrastructure issues, which is understandable, because at the time in 2001, if you go back, the community was really looking at, we need a police station. City Hall is not seismically sound. The library is, is, its need is greater than its space. Some of these issues are still familiar, some of them we've resolved. But as a result, when you read the 2050 plan, the original document, it gets fairly specific about these infrastructure needs. Instead of looking at them the way we tried to in the update, which was to broaden them a little bit more into categories, so that that way, we sort of recognize, there's a little bit more of a dynamic nature to our vision of our needs. For example, there's no discussion of the Green Bay Fire Station anywhere in the 2050 plan, but it's heavily discussed at points in the update, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So by having a public safety category, rather than specifically talking about infrastructure projects, under, public safety, infrastructure projects, we broaden that category, we keep all that need and discussion alive for consideration. And while in this 2050 update, for example, in this update that we presented to you, we sort of say, well, we took care of the police station, reality is, we don't know what 10 or 15 years from now, we might need, or what's changed, so we need to keep in mind that it's quite possible we'll have an infrastructure need we can't envision now. Let's hope not. And I do try to keep the context that we're only looking out to 2050 in mind. So you can see up there, we've, we've done these broader categories, moved them slightly away from the specific projects. And then the second issue is, and I've talked to Councilmember Chu off and on over the years about what the intention was of the priority listings with the ordinal numbers. And I think some of you will recall, we actually had an agenda item years ago, where I asked the council to discuss what that meant to you. And I, we came to an agreement at that meeting that it really doesn't read, when you get in the text of the 2050 plan, that their intention was to say, this, this one is number one, and we won't even talk about number five until we get number one solved. It's that, in an ideal world, we'd bang them out in this order probably, but we don't live in an ideal world. And I think over time, as I've been here, that ordinal rankings cause consternation with folks, because it implies that any one of these infrastructure needs is more important than any other one. And the reality that I think all the council knows is, all the infrastructure needs are important, and depending on how you interface with your city government, your ordinal ranking's gonna be different than your neighbors. And so we've stripped that out of the update, and not suggested that any one of these is particularly more important than another. What we've instead tried to do, and I'll get to that later in the presentation, is think more strategically about the prioritization of how we might fund the projects, because then I do think we need to get into some discussion about certain projects ranking differently than others, with respect to what funding opportunities exist in the world today. And I, I don't want to discredit or suggest the committee, it's clear in the narrative, the committee was having discussions along these lines. I think in an effort to sort of meet a lot of different conversations that were probably going on among a much larger group, the narrative gets a little tough to follow about this discussion of funding needs and how to address them, and the challenges that we tried to speak more bluntly to in the update. So we'll talk a little bit more about that toward the end of the presentation. I'm not gonna go through all the recommendations that are in the report. There are boxes throughout the narrative where I've highlighted recommendations that we have. Some of them are very simple ones, that we should study something more, we should talk about it more as a community. Others get a little more specific. I want to talk during my presentation about these very specific infrastructure needs, and sort of our rough estimates of the dollars involved, and then help you in the discussion to dive into any part of the document that you want to dive into. So let's start real briefly and talk about our public safety needs. As I said, we broadened this category to make sure we were capturing both of our fire stations. The original plan focused on only the downtown station, and didn't discuss the Green Bay Station. That's very understandable. When the committee was writing its report, the Green Bay Station was nine years old. And I have a feeling, if I could go back in time to that meeting and say, in 2018, we're gonna be concerned that the building's gonna fall apart, you would have all stared at me like I was crazy. But we know now that years of water intrusion, environmental factors, subsidence of the ground, which is a common problem in that area, have all taken a toll on this building. And we've had engineers and architects take a look at that fire station and say, there's some things you can do to get more life out of this building, but it's time to start thinking about its replacement, which is pretty disheartening in some respects. It's not that old a building. But I, I don't think it was necessarily built to be the, the generational building either, and that is partly what's playing into this a little bit, too. So it's a big-ticket need that we looked at, that I think probably surprised a few folks. I know some of the councilmembers, since I started talking about this fire station a year ago, have kind of looked at me quizzically, that it was really in bad shape. But we're being told, best estimate today, that if we invest about half a million dollars in the Green Bay Fire Station, we could probably limp it along for 10 to 20 years. But that we really need to start thinking about replacing it, our best estimate in today's dollars of a replacement is eight to 10 million dollars. That's a bet, as, all these numbers are rough estimates. The order of magnitude, the ma, of error could be affected by all sorts of variables, so please don't hold me to this in three years, when we're talking about it again, and it's 14 million or something like that. Hopefully it's six, because we figured out how to save a bunch of money. The downtown fire station has a number of repairs that have been scheduled, and we've simply been trying to figure out when, just strategically do them, without affecting some of the other challenges that we have. As those folks who follow the council discussions a lot know, we're in a period right now where cash flow is a challenge for us, because we need to keep pumping dollars into the Bon Air Bridge. We pay for those out of city money, and then we get reimbursed. So to take 500,000 out right now is tricky, and we have to be strategic about that. But there's a number of modest repairs that need to occur in the station, and we have the same general expectation of what happened at City Hall, which is, once we start working on the building, we're gonna discover a lot of dry rot and other issues that need to be fixed. Long-term, the building needs to be seismically improved, and we, and we know there's another, a number of other enhancements that need to occur to the building, to have it continue to be a viable fire station, and to be a stable building. And so we put the estimate of that around 3 million dollars right now. So let's move next door, where we are now, city offices. Fire station and the city offices here in City Hall, and right now, the library as well, occupy historical buildings. So they're not just investments to make sure the city can provide its services, these are cornerstone buildings of Larkspur, and help define the downtown. So they're, they're certainly marquee things that we need to invest in. As I mentioned, we already spent a lot of money to do the repairs around the building that needed to take place. Could still use some spit and polish here and there, nice couple coats of paint on a few things that we still want to do, that the building's in tremendously better shape than it was a few years ago, because we did do the work to find all the dry rot and discover where all those problems were. And we got some benefits out of it. We restored the balcony to the way it looked years ago, which I think's a night, nice effect. And folks don't get the benefit of going up in the bell tower, or what would have been bell towers, I think, when they first designed them. The towers are turrets at the top. Once in a while, staff bravely ventures up there. It's at least now safe to do that. It wasn't so safe to do that before we did the repairs. And we haven't had the leaking problems that we were having on a regular basis. But it does need to be seismically upgraded, and of course, one of our constant challenges in having that discussion is, how do we plan around the library potentially going to another location, and seismically repair this building? And there's a lot of logistics going into that discussion. That was heavily, that weighed heavily on the 2050 committee in 2001. You can read that in some of their narrative. I've talked to Councilmember Chu and other committee members. It's sort of the sequencing of some of this work, and how it had to take place. We think an overhaul of the building is about 8 million dollars. Right now, for short-term need, it just needs general maintenance, but that seismic improvement and a complete ADA improvement of the building, which will need to take place, is probably in the neighborhood of 8 million dollars. So people have a perspective that staff's not ballooning up these numbers. For example, when we really get involved in fixing this building, the elevator shaft has to be entirely redone. Not only is the elevator toward the end of its life of a model of elevator that they don't make anymore, so we're constantly having to pay to have parts found or manufactured to keep it going. It doesn't meet the new standards for an ADA elevator, so there's going to be a point where the level of work we do on the building triggers that alone, and that's not a small cost to put a new elevator shaft into the building. So that's how this number's being generated. We're looking at that total cost of not only what we think the building needs to be to be functional, but also to comply with various regulatory schemes. The corp yard, thank you to the council and the community, that was one of the big-ticket issues we solved several years ago. And we have a wonderful relationship right now with the Tiam High School District. We occupy a portion of their corporation yard that we lease from them. But there is the possibility, and there's a provision in that agreement, that if for some reason, the high school district needed that space back, they can start a process that would require us to relocate. So staff at least keeps that in the back of our mind. We don't see that as a, a urgent issue, but from time to time, if we hear possibilities of other sharing arrangements, we at least have those conversations, because we want to be prepared in case that day comes. And then we will be having a conversation about the costs that we weren't anticipating. So the next category we've created is community services, to combine the needs of the library and recreation under one umbrella in the plan. Here are your front faces of your two departments. So library has been well discussed, I'll hit on it in a second. I'm gonna start with recreation, actually. Most folks know, but not everybody knows, the building that you're looking at is actually owned by the Larkspur Corte Madera School District, and we're tenants there. And we have a very close relationship with that school district. I realized this morning, one of the things that's missing from our update is I didn't really get into the joint facilities that we operate and maintain with the school district, and that probably warrants a small addendum, because we've made some physical, I mean, some fiscal commitments to keep the all-weather field and the gym healthy and usable, not only for the school, but for the community after school. And those are big-ticket assets for us, even though we're not the owners of those facilities. This is an area where we did invest in recreation. We've, if you've been down there, folks, a lot of folks, I don't think, make the trek into the offices, they can do so much online now. We've created some pretty nice space in there for the community to come use, and it's booked heavily, particularly by folks who are tied to the hall community, hall middle school community. But because Hall Middle School is constantly under space constraint, not only us, but the district offices are sort of always living with the possibility that the needs of the school are going to outweigh our needs and the needs of the superintendent, for example, in his office, and we will all have to relocate. And that's basically been a concern since the day I got here, that that could happen. And so we do constantly keep that in mind, and look for opportunities for recreation if we need to relocate. Unfortunately, we have a good partner in the school district, so they talk to us about possibilities, too, because they do think that day's still coming, when they're gonna need that space for the school. At the moment, though, we don't think that's an urgent need. What I know, there's a lot of folks in the audience that are here, for the next item to talk to you about is the sense that there's an urgent need to address the library. Of course, it's been an urgent need, several prominent residents will tell you, back to the 70s, but we still haven't figured out how to solve this one. Now we at least have land, which is a big hurdle that was passed. The figures that we put into the plan, we've been spending about 5,000 to 10,000 dollars a year to just kind of make the current environment as nice as possible. To fully do the property- possible. To fully do the property the way it was envisioned in the master, community facility master plan, is a $20 to $30 million project. I think, as you know, and the next agenda item talks to, there are a lot of folks who want to revisit whether or not the facility should be developed in one chunk, which would be this figure, or take it to a smaller price tag by phasing the project, which would certainly bring that number down. I do think it's important to note, though, that you can't fulfill the true need of the community unless you're building the full facility. And that's not a knock. I think we need to talk about whether or not we want to get some momentum going over on the property. It just needs to be a recognition that we didn't make this number up, and we didn't make up the need. There was a lot of analysis that went into the fact that to meet all the demands of a library and community center, what we would deliver to our greater community services community, we're looking at this price tag. So even if we phase it out, long-term, that's what we need. Now, that probably, if we phase it out, a good portion of that cost goes into the 2,100 plan that we'll all be gone for when they're writing. But you need to keep that in mind as we move forward. A little tough to fully discern the next pictures. We move on to parks and open space, although I gave it a label inside the plan itself. This is a view of Tub Lake. A lot of folks don't know a lot, much about Tub Lake. If you haven't ever cracked open Larkspur Past and Present, or some other document to read about Tub Lake, back when the quarry and the brick kiln were all in full effect, there was a need to dam up and create a water supply up there, a reservoir that could be drawn upon. And Tub Lake is what lives on past all those uses, which is essentially a man-made water body that was dedicated to the city with the acreage around it. And I talk about it fairly candidly, that right now, it's an asset, because it exists. It's land. It's for the benefit and enjoyment of the community. But it's not something the city has the means right now to invest in. And as a result, it sits as a bit of a liability, and we, from time to time, have to go up there, because what we're finding is, more than residents choosing to take the hike up to Tub Lake, what's really happening is the transient population realizes they can hang out there for a little while without being spotted. And then full encampments bloom, and we have to go up and deal with health and safety challenges. So I put in the plan, one of the recommendations, we do need to talk about Tub Lake. But on a pure fiscal level, one of the most exciting things I think we've done, I wasn't necessarily the strongest advocate for Measure A when it came out. The council were cause a little concerned about sales tax capacity being taken by the open space and parks district. But as those discussions ensued, that quarter cent sales tax, a portion of it was set aside for the governments that provide recreational and park facilities. And I'm really proud of what we've done. Every community's done some brilliant things with Measure A. And every year, if you are interested, you can pull down the literature on what's going on with Measure A, and how's the money being spent. And Larkspur's never on that list. And I'll tell you why we're never on that list, because we don't do flashy projects with Measure A. We spend that money we get, we get about $90,000 a year, fixing our community parks, our infrastructure that's touching our community every day. We made a commitment, and we worked with the Parks and Rec Commission, to prioritize every infrastructure need in every little park in Larkspur. And we go through, no matter how big or small, and we try to solve all of these infrastructure needs that exist all throughout our parks that we otherwise couldn't pay for. And so actually, now, I'm probably Measure A's biggest proponent, because that's been a boon. We would not have been able to do some of the things we've accomplished. And I could have thrown up a lot of pictures of neat playgrounds. But I thought, in particular, for the vice mayor, I'd throw up one of Measure A's more recent projects, which was to deal with our tennis courts, which needed attention, and we didn't have another means to pay for. And we waited to direct Measure A money into something like tennis courts, until we felt we had hit, or had a plan to hit, some of those other key needs. And we've touched a lot of them, or we have other monies now in place to touch some of our neighborhood parks. We continue to prioritize our mini parks. So I don't know if we're ever going to be on the county's list of really cool projects, because we're doing all these little things. But I'm super proud of the fact that our mini parks look so much better than when I got here. We've also, I want to compliment the community, since we started investing in our mini parks, we've had so many opportunities to leverage dollars. You know, a lot of folks know that the Heatherwood, the Heather Gardens community rallied together, raised money to complement the Measure A money that was set aside for their park, to get an even nicer environment in the Heather Gardens, in the Heatherwood Park. Folks don't know necessarily that the owners of the Serenity Apartments, unless you're really a hawk of watching our council meetings, stepped forward for Neighborhood Park, which is adjacent to their facility, and invested money to complement what we wanted to do up there. We've had a few other times that different neighborhood groups have come forward and said, how can we get involved to make this an even better project? And that's really exciting. That's putting dollars at work, and then having the community say, I trust you. I see what you're doing. Can we do that, too? So one of the smaller-ticket items on this huge list, but one I'm really proud of, so I wanted to highlight it. And then it would, it has to be that we talk a little bit about our path to travel, that we took all our roads. The original plan kind of talked about roads, streets, bike paths. We put it all under the category of paths of travel. And of course, here's some roadwork going on in Medrone Canyon that really gives you a sense of all the things we're doing, paving roads, building sidewalks. And so we really need to say thank you, community, for passing Measure B. I know that there's going to be a lot of construction fatigue, but we're going to get through it, and we're going to have an amazing road system. And we won't be ranked last soon in the pothole report, I promise. Now, pass of travel doesn't just include the roads. That's the big-ticket item that we got to finally check off the list. But it also includes some of our smaller, but also equally important, infrastructure needs. We have one of the larger bike-ped off-road systems in the county, and we really are the nexus for a lot of the bike travel through the county on our paths. And so that's another part of this, that we have infrastructure needs to maintain. And then smaller infrastructure needs, such as our stairways, staircases, which have gotten a little more attention as we talk about neighborhoods needing to have evacuation plans. So those all fall under this infrastructure category, and we talk about them a bit in the report. The original plan talked about storm drains, but I would suggest that what we understand about our storm drain challenges today is a lot more robust than what they understood in 2001. We've spent a lot of time trying to educate ourselves about the situation with our storm drains. We've experienced a number of failures where we've had to go fix things in the storm drain system. And then, in addition, as the council knows, you've authorized funding to do a full-blown storm drain master plan, which will do a complete assessment of the system's need. So in advance of that plan, we've had to do a rough estimate of what we think the likely cost is going to be to fix the storm drains. And we have the combination of some big-ticket repairs we know need to happen. And then your Public Works Director, City Engineer, Julian Skinner, based on talking to folks in the industry who work on storm drains, and his own experiences, has suggested a percentage of what we could expect the cost to be, based on the percentage of our value of our system. And so for now, our placeholder amount for the storm drains is we might be looking at as much as $10 million, once we finish the storm drain master plan, in needs that'll need to be addressed before 2050. The $2 million, we know now, about a million of that is a regulatory challenge we have, and that we basically need to adjust, address our storm, our different catch basins throughout the storm drain system, because we basically, and I may be even saying it's too big, but if everybody could kind of see, we kind of ought to make sure nothing, nothing bigger than that ever leaves our catch basin. And the system was not designed for that. We're talking about, for example, if we walk over here, we can see one on the street. It's a typical catch basin that you might see anywhere in any public sidewalk. Well, now, we have to put some infrastructure underneath that and periodically clean it out, because we're going to have to put some sort of grading system in that, grading system in there, so that we can catch all these little particles. And I don't know if that, that might even be too big, huh, Julian?
Cigarette butt.
Cigarette butt, okay. So, yeah, I was doing it too large, so.
These are new state?
These are Clean Water Act regulations.
Federal.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. So we're not, you know, we want to, we want to be good stewards of the environment, but this is a serious challenge, and we, we need to address it sooner rather than later. The rest of that money we're seeing in the short term is our known problems in the system that have to be addressed sooner rather than later. Parking, we had a discussion about parking earlier today, and one of the speakers was talking about, can't you find more parking in downtown, and suggested some locations. Parking's a real difficult challenge for us, mostly because the land acquisition costs are so high, and the opportunities to acquire land purely for parking are very low. So I admit, we don't offer a ton of solutions in this one, in this update. And we don't necessarily attach what's big, we don't really attach a price tag here. What we talked about in the section in the 2050 update is, this is probably an area we're going to need help. We're going to need to work with our partners, who may have the opportunity. Take it out in Larkspur Landing, there's some opportunity with it becoming more and more of a transportation hub. And we have a lot of agencies now operating in and around Larkspur Landing, so we have some partnership possibilities there. There may ultimately need to be a public-private partnership arrangement in the downtown that we'll have to explore to solve that problem. And some of it may have to wait until we start to realize more of the development vision of the class, the central Larkspur area-specific plan. We may need to realize more of the vision of that plan to achieve more parking in the Okay, so I mentioned that one thing that tried to achieve with the 2050 plan is a little bit more discussion, blunt discussion, about the strategy around financing all of these things. And let's face it, there is a fundamental question that's at the heart of how you might think strategically about financing, and that's, what are the voters willing to support? Folks who haven't been around the community for a while don't necessarily know. It took three trips to the ballot to get support for the police station. And that wasn't because folks didn't believe and support the police department. It took that while to build the awareness with the community and to gain some comfort that all other opportunities to finance have been explored. And I'm sure there were a lot of politics, I wasn't here, so I'm sure there were a lot of politics in play as well. But it's not an easy thing to just say, we're going to go get a bond, and we're going to go get property taxes to pay for a general obligation bond. We have a tendency sometimes to sort of casually float that out, as that's the solution. And the reality is, we need the voters to support us. So as we think about what that discussion with the voters need to, needs to be, we have to sort of accept the practical reality that we may only be able to ask for so much money from voters. There's only so much tolerance for what they're willing to see added on their property taxes. And I've told this story before to the council. I think I'd been here six months, and I got a phone call from someone saying, my property taxes are outrageous. And I said, well, let's go through your bill together. And a million-dollar home, a million-dollar valuation for tax purposes, $10,000 in basic tax, and this home was paying something like another $8,500 in additional taxes, which understandably, the property owner couldn't fathom how that had happened. But when you start going through what all the different fees were, and what they were adding up to, you started to see why they were experiencing that. One thing that I don't think the 2050 report gets into, possibly enough, and we tried to touch on it in this report, is we're also in competition with other needs and other agencies. And we have to be both concerned about that from our own desire to ask, and then also sensitive to that, because everything on that property tax bill relates to some public service that's been deemed necessary and needed by the community. So entering into that fray has been something the council correctly hasn't taken lightly. And in fact, the only significant property tax ask you've made is the police building right now. So as we start to think about how we're going to finance a 2050 plan, how much can people really support, or are they willing to support? So what I've itemized here, and you'll find in the report, is we took the big-ticket needs and laid them out, and we also talked about different financing tools that might apply. The 2050 plan does an excellent job, so we didn't repeat it, of educating folks about what all these different types of tools are. And so folks who want to learn more about that should read about that. I did cite, there's a website that's an excellent resource, California City Finance website, if you want to go learn about the latest and greatest in municipal financing. But we sort of wanted to enumerate what we thought were realistic funding sources. So if you go to the original 2050 plan, all the projects could be funded by a bond, which is true. But would you fund, fund them all with a bond? There's a little bit of discussion in there about this topic. We tried to put it more bluntly, which is, which of these projects are you not going to be able to fund any other way? And that lets you draw some lines on this table, because you really sit there and go, there's a reason fire stations and city halls get built and repaired and replaced by bonds. And that's because there isn't really another great source to go get. There's not some grant on this scale to pay for this type of infrastructure. Grants might contribute to some degree, but they're not going to cover this price tag. These are not types of infrastructure that benefactors typically adopt and pay for. I think the City Hall's really important, not just as a cornerstone of our community, but as where my office is located. But I understand that a lot of folks don't necessarily put a lot of priority on where my office is. That's okay. But there are other infrastructure needs that may have other sources that are better. The library and community center is something that there are other ways to potentially get money. Donations is a big part of that. And you have a lot of folks in the audience who are going to make a commitment to you, I think, tonight, that they know how to get you some level of donation. And then storm drains, we talk about it in the report. While I'm, I'm very proud and excited that we're on the bleeding edge of JPA Calper's Law, I'm not sure I want to be on the bleeding edge of trying to impose a utility fee for a storm drain. So I'm really hoping some other city does it and survives the legal challenge, so that we can do it. And it's not that I want to hit folks up for another fee, but there's a reason the legislature recently decided that storm drains are a utility. And that's because they really are tied to providing a service to your property, which is to draw water away from your property and send it where it needs to go. And so hopefully, within the span of the 2050 plan, that becomes a viable way to have a fee structure that might then let you tie it to some sort of financing mechanism to deal with the need there. So we drew a second line there. Definitely don't anticipate big donors offering to pay for the sewer system, or the storm drain system. Now, I don't want to totally dismiss, there's two other bullets that I wanted to make sure we thought about under the library and community center, which is, they're also great opportunities to talk partnerships with other agencies, to talk partnerships with public developers, talk partnerships with private developers. And the council has heard on many occasions from members of the community, I want you to explore those possibilities. And they're certainly something the staff would be happy to discuss with anyone who has some ideas in that regard. And that may be another way to help achieve the community's goals with respect to that need. But this is sort of the big punchline of the update, is this recognition that, in my mind, and I think in the minds of the two committee members, the three items at the top of this list are the priority, when and if we go ask the community for a bond. If the community says they'll support more, then you look down the list and you say, well, maybe we can add some more, you know, maybe we can add a portion of the library and community center, or something like that. But if, this need's only going to get greater and greater, the deterioration of the Green Bay Fire Station has gone from something I would have never thought I was talking about, to probably my number-one infrastructure concern. And so we just need to keep that in mind. As I said, Mr. Mayor and council members, I wanted to get this particular point across in my presentation. Thank you for indulging me and letting me take some time to get there. There's a lot of other commentary and recommendations and thought in the, in the update, and we are happy to discuss whatever you would like to this evening. Turn it back to you and the council members.
Well, thank you very much. That's, I really appreciate the clarity with which you made your presentation. It packed a lot of information in an understandable frame. you made your presentation, it packed a lot of information in an understandable frame. Are there council member questions, or the city manager on his report?
Can I just say something, Dan?
Please.
It has been a pleasure, and I know Councilman Harf would say the same thing, working with you, Dan, and with Julian, the amount's daunting, but, Dan, your enthusiasm with the Measure B and the Measure A, and how much you've done for this city and your passion and your staff's passion, it's pretty impressive, the update, the revision, and everything you've done to inform us of the 2050 plan. It's exciting to know that Larkspur is in good hands and will continue being only improved in the future, and so, thank you. I do have a couple of questions.
Please.
Okay. Dan, with this tub lake property, that was a big discussion with Kevin Harf and myself, is it zoned for development?
It's actually deeded to the city for a park purpose, and so, uh, its zoning sort of has rendered secondary to the fact that that's the way it was deeded. One possibility we've bounced around with staff, and I haven't had time to really dive in with Sky about the legalities, is it may be, someday we're going to see the final development of the sanitation district's property. It may be a partnership opportunity for the city and that developer to, um, create a genuine park atmosphere around this property that would let them realize some of their requirement to, uh, provide that in and around the development.
And you shared that with Ross Valley.
I haven't had significant discussions about that specific point with the Ross Valley staff. When and if a developer emerges who's been given the authority to have that discussion, we would have it with them. Ross Valley's not going to be the actual developer, but I've told, I'm not shy about bringing up this point, that we do have a relatively undeveloped park asset up there that might be a benefit to the developer as well as the community, um, if they took an interest in it.
And is there other land that Larkspur owns that we can look at to hand off that we don't need?
To get rid of, and make some money off of, is that kind of where we're going? Yeah. So, unfortunately, some of probably the most, the largest pieces of land we own were deed restricted, so they aren't simple matters to relieve the city of them, and they aren't all located, some of them are located in some odd landlocked areas where you can't really imagine what would be done with them, so they just sort of sit there. I don't know that I would say this is a big money-making opportunity, but we own all sorts of little slivers here and there, we own different pieces of right-of-way, we own different paper streets. At some point, we probably have to have a council discussion about what to do with all those little pieces, um, you know. I'm a big believer you hold on to things when you might have a use for them, some of these things I just don't know that we'll ever have a public use for. And in some of these cases, folks have fenced them into their yards because they didn't know they existed, and the city probably honestly forgot that it was actually a piece of public property, and then we find it on a map and kind of realize we need to deal with the situation.
We should look into that in 2019.
Okay.
Are there council member questions on the city manager's report? Councilmember Chu and then councilmember Wei.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but, um, I just wanted to comment and, you know, say that your interpretation of the original 2050 plan was, uh, spot-on, you know, you're looking at it 16 years after the fact. So, uh, I think to help reinforce a couple of key points, and, you know, like you've mentioned earlier, that it's lost on, you know, a lot of people who read the plan because they don't read the whole thing. You know, it says priority, but, uh, the plan itself prioritized things based on community need, not an ordinal number of what should be addressed first. Uh, the second thing is that, you know, when financial opportunities present themselves, you take it while you can. And the third thing is that there are dependencies. You know, people have always asked us why we were dealing with Public Works before anything else when it was way down at the bottom, well, Public Works was on the same site as the police station, so you can't deal with the police station, which was first, before you deal, you know, you have to deal with Public Works, so, you know, that's, those are kind of the things that were subtleties that I think were lost in a lot of public discussion, so, thank you for presenting that.
Councilmember Wei.
So, Dan, a few things. On the General Plan Committee that Kevin and I also sit on, we've talked a little bit about sea level rise and wildland fire prevention and mitigation. We have a huge upcoming issue by 2050 of sea level rise along the Cortumadera Creek area that we've talked about in that context. We haven't put any dollar amounts or anything to it, or what the mitigation is actually going to be, but I'm curious as to why that's not in, um, this 2050 plan, because by 2040, I think a lot of our community in the, near the Cortumadera Creek is going to need to have some significant work done to mitigate the flooding.
So, one of the challenges that we have with both the issues you've brought up, sea level rise and wildfire mitigation, is that we aren't necessarily the jurisdiction with the responsibility to build the infrastructure. We may be the jurisdiction that is directly affected, but, uh, we don't necessarily have the authority to implement solutions to sea level rise on Cortumadera Creek. A lot of the wildfire fuel isn't actually in Larkspur, so we need to be active participants in regional conversations about solutions, and the 2050 plan is very specifically focused at what are the clear infrastructure issues of the city.
Okay. I just wanted to see if those are reconcilable, and I can see your point there with that.
It's one we have to be prepared, that there's going to be an ask at some point for us to contribute, and what that is, I don't know, it may be as modest as contributing the staff work that's necessary to plan, it may be to actually contribute to infrastructure, and part of it is hard right now, I don't know the answer to that. So, in your General Plan Committee, sorry, I'm going long-winded to make sure everybody understands, um, your General Plan Committee is sort of a steward right now of those questions and making sure they're not forgotten.
Okay. So, second question is ADA requirements, you mentioned the elevator shaft as an idea. Are the ADA requirements, um, that are now coming out by the state, something that we need to factor in here as a large expense for us, or are they going to be, um, added in in our regular capital campaign, our capital updates?
So, there's a blurry gray area, which is, when did you trigger needing to do an ADA improvement?
Okay.
And so, we tend to, at staff, assess that and program that into the specific infrastructure project.
I see.
So, for example, Measure B roadwork, the current improvement program, contains quite a bit of ADA mandated improvements to the sidewalks and the curbs, that, um, we just programmed into that project and consider part of that project cost. So, when I say that I think City Hall is an $8 million project, or actually, when Mr. Skinner told me he thought it was an $8 million project, uh, because he's a lot smarter about these things than me, I know he was factoring in various ADA compliance issues that he can already envision will need. And, let's face it, if we really get into rehabbing this building, it's not just an elevator shaft, there's a lot of need to improve the accessibility.
Right. And then, lastly, um, between the 2050 Plan update and the original plan, state laws have changed, and they will always be changing, hence why we have storm drain mitigation that we have to do of the equivalent of $10 million. Would it be, um, wise for us to add a contingency sort of budget line item there for all those unforeseen regulatory things, or is that how these proposals work?
You know, you may want to at least sort of have us have some language, it always notes that the community needs to be prepared for there to be some additional costs because regulatory requirements are dynamic. We're trying to be careful doing estimates, but not look like we're over padding numbers, and I'm afraid I'd be over padding if I just guessed at, you know, and you're kindly blaming the state, a lot of the requirements you're mentioning are federal requirements, and those are the really expensive ones. And, you know, they have a tendency to be really concerned about birds that, uh, it's really hard around here, but, um, I would say we don't want to get accused of looking like we're over inflating costs, but recognizing that by the time we get around these projects, the regulatory environment they exist in might be very different.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had.
Other questions from the council? Uh, this is an informational update item tonight.
Councilmember Harf.
Kevin has questions, sorry.
Comments of Councilmember Morris, um, having worked with her and with Dan, I just really thought it was a very, uh, good exercise, and was very appreciative of the opportunity to participate in it. And I very much appreciate, um, our city managers' efforts to keep us focused on, uh, the needs for capital investment within our community and the priorities that we need to set going forward, um, as opposed to sometimes our inclination to go off into tangents that take away from that priority, so, I think this has been a very good exercise, and I think we'll, great expectations for our community's, um, future.
Thank you for your comments. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this informational update item? The purpose tonight is to review and provide feedback. Yes, ma'am.
Cindy Winter, I agree that that is a superb compendium of our needs, and thank you very much. My only concern is with the proposed parking garage at Larkspur Landing when we're moving into a new universe of opportunities. All experts agree that technology is creating a historic change in transportation. While there is much expert disagreement as to the when, where, and how, there is a consensus among many that over time, there may be less need for parking. Planners are coming to consider that vehicle storage such as parking lots and parking garages is wasted space, wasted expense. That land, they say, could be better used for housing, mixed-use developments, public venues, or open space. One concept involves automated mini-shuttles that would collect small groups of people in far-flung neighborhoods, take them to major transit hubs, drop them off, and then leave to repeat the trip. In 2016, when Summit, New Jersey, was faced with the need to build a costly new parking structure for its train station, the planners realized it would be much cheaper to subsidize shared Uber rides. By 2017, Summit had shifted to Lyft, but is evidently continuing with the ride-sharing, so it must be a success, or at least showing promise, and I have some links here. While that may not work for everyone, traffic congestion is governed by what economists call a J curve, which means that if perhaps 20% to 25% of commuters took these mini-shuttles, roadway congestion would be reduced, as would be the need for parking facilities. With a reference to Larkspur Landing, I fear that if additional parking were provided there, the increased inducement to drive would cause such traffic congestion on West and East Sir Francis Drake, that no matter how the signalization was tweaked, the roads would move from semi-grid lock into total paralysis. I'm not here to advocate tonight this specific Summit solution, but I do strongly support the idea that the city should add a few qualifying words to the 2050 plan that would refer to these possible changes and others. What is relevant for 2018 may not be suitable for 2028, much less 2050. And, my suggested language just says that, um, we know these big changes are coming, we don't know exactly what they will involve. For that reason, the parking section of the 2050 plan will most likely need discussion and revision one or more times during the next 30 years. That's pretty anodyne, and I think it should be included, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to comment or ask questions on this item? If not, we'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for any further feedback or discussion. Anything else council members would like to add? Councilmember Harf, would you like to add any further comment or ask further questions on this update? All right. Any further discussion from council? All right, thank you very much, we'll close that item.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to note, we'll probably put this on the consent calendar for the next meeting for you to formally, uh, adopt it as an official city document. Is that okay?
Without objection. All right, very good.
Great.
Thank you very much, thanks for all the hard work that goes into that, and thank you to the council members for the work in helping update that. Uh, we'll move to item 8.3, which is a request for formal standing from the Larkspur Library and Community Task Force. Maybe have a staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you for your patience this evening.
At your last meeting during the public comment period, uh, Mr. Joe Jennings, representing the entity identified as the Larkspur Library and Community Task Force, submitted a letter that's attached to your staff report, um, and requested that you agendize it and consider the requests contained in the letter. The letter, as staff interprets it, has sort of a broad request to be recognized, and then enumerates some very specific items, uh, beyond being recognized. What we've suggested and provided to you is our recommendation that you do recognize this entity, uh, staff's had many opportunities now to interact with representatives of the task force, I know that individual council members have had many opportunities to interact with members of the task force. Uh, I think they checked the boxes of the type of grassroots effort you expressed an interest in seeing emerge, uh, from the community, uh, and so I think recognition is recommended and appropriate. What I do think needs a lot of discussion are the enumerated points in the letter, and some further discussion around what it means to move forward in partnership together, what the different processes are going to look like. And so, to that end, I've also recommended that the council appoint a two-member committee to, uh, reach out and sit down with the task force. As an ad hoc committee, you can work fairly expeditiously to get into the minutiae and make sure everybody's on the same page about what these words mean, and what we're agreeing the tasks are that the task force would take on, and what the city will be doing. So, um, the action tonight is a recommendation to pass this resolution, and then also to appoint a two-person ad hoc committee.
Are there questions from the council for staff regarding this item or the resolution?
Yeah, I have one.
Catherine?
So, in regards to the appointed committee of two members to meet with the task force and city staff to discuss roles and responsibilities, is that where you envision a timeline or a framework of, um, a meeting schedule or a public outreach schedule, is that, it's in that context that that would be decided?
So, I get asked a lot by folks who are asking me how this process, what's this process look like, part of the problem is we haven't had the discussion about the very topics that you just referenced, so yes, I think those are topic one and topic two.
Okay, for the ad hoc committee that would meet with the task force.
Yeah, I think the ideal is that the ad hoc committee and whoever represents the task force hash these things out, and then bring it back and report it to you as a council.
Okay.
I'd like to say something.
Vice Mayor Morris?
So, I just want to, um, compliment the task force and the leadership that it has taken on, and, Joe, I'm looking at you, and your committee, I cannot thank you enough, you have reached out to all the commissions, all the committees, individuals that you thought was, many individuals, and you spent hours on meeting with everybody explaining that this is fundraising, part of the city's involved, and it's just been very impressive to watch you, and we needed someone like you to bring this up and, um, start something new and fresh, so I just want to really compliment you and your committee, and thank you. And I know that you also, you and I, and Catherine, we met with the Larkspur Foundation Committee, and they were just as excited, so, anyway, I'm thrilled, and I know there's going to be more discussions, but when it comes to making a motion, I like to be that person.
Councilmember Harf?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Helmer, I just want to echo those comments, um, I- I had a number of very productive interactions with this group and really have been impressed with the leadership that they have shown. I think it's an element of leadership that frankly, we've lacked in the efforts that we've pursued in the last few years. It's always been my view that we can't move forward on this project without commitment towards responsible funding. And I think this group has really stepped up to provide direction in that regard and I'm very supportive of what they've accomplished.
Thank you very much. Any further council questions? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this item?
Good evening, council members. I'm Elizabeth Sunshine. I'm the president of the Recreation and Parks Commission, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the commission, which has unanimously endorsed this resolution. We are thrilled that the very many recreation needs of our community currently and in the future are going to be in the hands of this new committee, working very closely, of course, with the city council. And we're just really thrilled that our leader, Director Whitley, who has put so much energy and thoughtfulness and planning into this process, will now, will start to move forward on that. So on behalf of our commission, we wanted to ask for your support of this resolution. And I too echo the words for the leadership here. I think this is really, this one is getting off on the right foot. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council, city. My name is A.J. Ray. I'm a Larkspur resident. I'm a member of both the task force and the Larkspur Library Foundation. I'm also the treasurer of the Heatherwood Park Association. Dan, love the shout-out from Measure A, and we love our new park. Thank you. As a member of the Larkspur Library Foundation, we are charged with supporting programming and media acquisition for the library. We have three members with 40 years of experience on that group, and they have lots of insight and experience and lessons learned that they're going to share with the task force. So we're grateful for them. Last month, the Larkspur Library Foundation voted unanimously in support of this independent task force with the sole function of capital fundraising and facilitating, excuse me, facilitating, I public speak all the time. It's an, it's just a little, but with the sole, with the sole purpose for this independent task force of capital fundraising, to build a building, and facilitating community outreach. And we are absolutely excited to get the ball rolling in partnership with you to turn an empty lot into something that Larkspur can be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, A.J. Hi, welcome.
I am Kathy Green. I'm a resident of Larkspur and I am on the task force. And I just wanted to say a couple of words. There's been eight members of this small group meeting over the last few months. We are incredibly excited. We are ready. We know this is a really big challenge, but we have some really clear goals, so that's something we're all, it's really easy to get behind it. This is a different approach. I was actually working on the original plan before the Rose Lane development came in on the ad hoc committee. And so I know what we went through to try to figure out the use and the space and the needs, but to see this finally come to fruition is amazing. So we're really looking forward to collaborating with the city. We want to raise public and private funds. The phased approach is a new idea. It's doable. We can finally have our library and community center together. We can build trust with the citizens of Larkspur and the region and the city, and we can also build a community that doesn't exist at this point. When it comes, we're going to put a whole new community together, and that is so exciting. So we're all just citizens. We're volunteers. We're giving our time. We're giving our own money. We're giving a whole lot of coffee. So, but right now, the time is right. The circumstances are right. The stars are aligning, and the time is now. And we've started organization, outreach, as you have heard. We're starting with great leadership. It really, this is it. The time is right. We have to put this balloon off the ground and it's ready to go. And so that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Other public comment?
Well, I'm Joe Jennings. I'm a resident of Larkspur and I'm the task force co-chair with Catherine Pike. And I'd like to thank the council members, the city staff, particularly Director Whitley, and our librarian Janet Seckel and Neil Toff in planning, the current and past members of the library trustees, the foundation, the friends of the library, the Parks and Rec Commission, and a whole host of former and current community leaders and activists who have helped us get here. It's been a great learning process. And we stand at this threshold, hopefully, taking the lessons from the past and leveraging the investments the city has wisely made in securing the land. We wouldn't be here if we hadn't done that. And trying to get those lessons internalized into a new approach. But this is now an opportunity on our watch, which means we're not building this for ourselves. A perfect embodiment of what I want would be the wrong thing. Trust me. What we're trying to do is discover what can we afford and what serves the largest percentage of our needs in a cost-effective means that we can build and support going forward as a first phase. And we're not making this effort for ourselves, actually. My task force is an interesting collection of altruists, which means people who have a selfless concern for the well-being of others, not for themselves. And so their actions are my strength to come to you and say, we welcome everyone to be part of this process. We welcome everyone to help us raise the funds, collaborate for planning and building. And we know it's going to be a steep climb, a very steep climb. And there will be setbacks and very dark days, and we will experience discouragement. But I believe if we are serving others rather than ourselves, and if we're listening to others rather than ourselves, and if we work together as a community, we will one day succeed and enjoy a celebration in the new facility. And I want to thank you for the opportunity, and we won't let you down.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all the effort that has led to now. I really appreciate it. A lot of understanding, a lot of reflection, and that, we really appreciate that. Other public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Steve Stein, resident of Larkspur, and I wholeheartedly support the resolution before you. Hope you do, too. There's been some concern raised about the idea of a phased project, and I don't think that that should be a particular concern. Going all the way back to the 2013 plan, you said, let me just quote, although a single phase is preferred, I'm quoting from the 2013 plan on page 72, although a single phase is preferred, at this time, project funding has not been established. If multiple phases are necessary, the nature of the proposed project, a library and community center with joint space as a connecting element, lends itself favorably to a phased construction approach. And then you go on, the document goes on in some detail about how to do a phased approach depending on what kind of funds are raised. Excuse me. In the report you just had on the 2050 plan, the city manager was at great pains to point out that certain measures can be bonded, may be able to be bonded more likely than others, and that the library is one that may have difficulty getting bonding, so you may need private donations. And this organization, the task force, has bravely and energetically said they think they can do that to a great extent. Not all the way by any means, but to a great extent. So one of the things that I'm hoping that in, A, you'll look favorably on the resolution, and B, that you'll think seriously about the fact that in the wisdom that the council had to acquire the property and to set it aside for this use, you also, at one point, for which I thank you, put up a sign saying that that was going to be the use of the property. It will help the fundraisers enormously if you see your way to putting that sign back on it so that we know it removes any doubt. Had the sign never been there, it'd be one thing, but it was there and it's taken down, so putting it back will certainly help. Anyway, that's fairly minor in the scheme of things, but not, not all that minor. A library becomes a center of the community almost by definition, an intellectual or an informational center. But I know you have something more in mind in terms of a social center component beside the library, and that's why these, the discussion about phasing becomes important. And that's as it should be, because obviously, the city needs gathering spaces. Information is something that needs to be shared anyway. And so a library needs spaces besides just a repository for books, we know that. So as you discuss this in detail and as the group that you form discusses it with the task force, you know, I'm sure those things will be worked out. But anyway, thank you very much for getting it this far and certainly thank Mr. Jennings and his task force for doing that. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Anyway, I wanted to encourage you to go ahead and get behind this. I'm 52 years in Larkspur, same house. I really enjoy it here. But one of the dreams that I had in 1969, 72, was all the effort that I put into helping the library downstairs, and then it became necessary to put the, you know, the elevator that now has to be replaced. And so that's another issue. But all the things we did over the years was just to provide a facility that would incorporate learning and education, all kinds of things. I read so many books in that library down there, they were suspicious. But eventually, they said, would you like to work for us? And I said, who are we? You know? And I did for 35 years, and then I got tired. But I, Joe wanted to know what I knew, and I said, we don't have time, but I'm behind you all the way, Joe. I want to get far enough behind so I can watch, but I think it's going to be a great thing to watch. I think Joe has talked to so many people and brought so many talents together. How can we go wrong? You know, what was it? Somebody said, what do you got to lose? Not much. This guy's going to do a lot, and I'll be here to watch, I hope. But anyway, thank you. I didn't want to leave this microphone go unused.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work for the Larkspur Library over the years. Now we greatly appreciate all your effort. Other public comment this evening on this item? All right, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council for consideration of the resolution. Who would like to start? Counselmember Chu?
Sure, why not?
And then Vice Mayor Morrison has the honor.
Yes. Yeah, I'd also like to acknowledge the efforts of Joe Jennings. You know, when he first approached me, you know, we came down to this meeting, you know, meeting room here, and he started to give me his whole proposal. And, you know, what I saw was a no-nonsense utilitarian approach to another way of getting this done. And like I said earlier in the evening, for those of you who are here, then I asked him the question, a couple of questions. Why wouldn't anyone get behind this? And what's the worst thing that can happen? So it's clear that everybody who he's gotten together in this community has answered the first question. You know, so thank you for all the different individuals as well as library groups for getting behind, you know, this idea. And the second thing, I don't see really a downside to this, because if we take this phased approach, something will happen, and the residents of Larkspur will actually have a facility that they can begin to realize and start using. So I think one of the questions that's been left up to the council to address is, who do we appoint to this committee? I'm going to kind of take a practical approach to that also. If we look at the 2050 Steering Committee and the current Larkspur Library Community Center Committee, they both consist of Vice Mayor Morrison and Councilmember Harof. So I think all these topics being related, it'd be a good way to maintain some continuity in these infrastructure discussions. Vice Mayor Morrison, you know, will be the mayor next year. I think that's important to keeping this momentum. And if we have the normal succession of leadership, you know, I'd certainly be willing to be the alternative if you decide to appoint one for that particular committee. So I support the resolution, and I look forward to your motion. Thank you, everyone.
Great.
Counselmember Wade, do you have any supportive comments?
Just to clarify, the resolution states that the city council shall appoint a committee of two of its members to meet with the task force. Do we need to embed that action within the resolution, or can we take that up later?
I think you would pass the resolution and then appoint the committee.
So I'd like to make a motion and pass Resolution 7818, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Larkspur expressing its commitment to partner with the Larkspur Library and Community Center Task Force to pursue fundraising for the development of a library and community center on the community facility parcel.
This is Kevin. I'd be happy to second that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion will, will state their vote in the road call.
Counselmember Wade? Yes. Counselmember Chu?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Heck, yes!
Counselmember Harof?
Yes.
And Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Yay! Now get to work.
The motion passes unanimously, and as stated earlier, Counselmember Chu suggested that Vice Mayor Morrison and Counselmember Harof be the ad hoc committee representing the council as liaise on to the task force.
And Larry as an alternate.
And Larry Chu as an alternate. Do we need a separate motion and action with respect to that?
I think you have the appointing authority as mayor.
So I will, as mayor, make that appointment.
Did he confirm that he was okay with that?
It doesn't matter. I appointed him.
We just volunteered him.
Kevin, you're not here.
He shall. I'm sure he'd be happy to do that.
That's what happens when you don't show up to a meeting. You get volunteered.
So that concludes that item. Any further comment? Thank you so much for all the work you're about to perform.
That's right. Let's do it.
The committee is meeting at Perry's.
Oh, I want to join this committee. We're already partying.
Just for a wrap-up discussion. Can anybody here in public safety want to join us? Thank you all.
And Joe, you saw my note earlier. All right. Take, all right. Thank you very much for all your help with that item. We have one more item this evening, and we'll wait 90 seconds for the room to clear.
Thank you. Heritage Board appointee.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, God, really? Where's the agenda? Do you have the application?
Down at the main board.
Oh, it's in the staff report. Here she comes. She's going to save us.
I think we're still in session.
Okay. Yeah. I thought we'd be here longer. We're doing pretty well.
All right, we're going to reconvene the meeting. Thank you for your patience. Last item on the, or second to the last item on the agenda this evening is item 8.4, Appointment to the Heritage Preservation Board. We have a staff report.
There's a vacancy on the Heritage Preservation Board. You have one applicant that was interviewed by the council at a special meeting convened prior to your last regular meeting. Turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have consideration of an appointment to the Heritage Preservation Board. We have one applicant, Mr. Fran Capaletti. Congratulations.
[Laughter]
It was a long, drawn-out process.
No, you're going to be wonderful. I really.
And we're really grateful for your offer to serve.
Yeah, very much.
So, do we need an action?
I'll nominate Fran Capaletti. Am I pronouncing that right?
Yes.
To be a new member of the Heritage Preservation Board.
And it's a four-year term?
Two.
Two-year term? Do we know? Four.
Oh. Clerk says four.
Four-year term. Thank you so much.
And I'll second that, and thanks so much for hanging out throughout the whole council meeting.
I really enjoyed the 2050 Plan.
Dan Schwartz did a nice job, didn't he?
Yeah, we're lucky to have that. Councilmember Harof, you with us?
Yes.
Okay. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor of the motion for appointing Fran Capaletti to the Heritage Preservation Board, please say aye.
Councilmember Wade?
Roll call.
My roll.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Councilmember Chu?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Heck, yes.
Councilmember Harof?
Yes.
And Mayor Helmer?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fran. You're going to be great on it.
You can adjourn by acclamation.
All right.
We'll let you do that.
And we will adjourn by acclamation.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Well, I thought that was going to be a lot.
Nine seventeen.